Welcome to our October 6 council meeting. We certainly appreciate everybody who have an opportunity to join us on our new platform, Zoom, not new obviously to the iCloud or to the Ether. A lot of us are doing Zoom, especially students at home, I know that's kind of the go-to platform. But also YouTube and people can watch it on AMP. So I'm going to turn it right over to our very able assistant city attorney, city attorney, I'm sorry, city manager and Nat Rochanasa there is going to tell you folks how you can participate. And we're hoping this is going to facilitate public input in a better way rather than just having phone calls and waiting. So we're going to be able to bring you into our virtual reality, we hope. So Nat, with that, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you Mayor Roberson. We have a new process today in place for public participation. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. Since March, we've been running our public meetings using Google Meet, but now that Zoom has a secure video conference service that's approved by the Department of Homeland Security for use by government agencies, we're now moving our public meetings to Zoom. Joining on Zoom is preferred because there is no lag time. You're connected live to the meeting in real time. And this meeting is also streamed on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25, which has a 90-second delay. If you're planning to make a public comment, you can join the meeting using Zoom on the Zoom app or on the Zoom web interface or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate the delay if you're joining on YouTube. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone or telephone, use the link that's provided on the agenda. Or you can also join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333, and if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press "add." Detailed instructions on how you can join by Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment when it's time to open public comment, you can raise your hand virtually using the Zoom app, or if you're connected to Zoom by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand. What you'll also do is then when it's your turn to speak and when we call out your name, you'll have to dial *6 to unmute yourself. We ask that public commenters, please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room while connected by phone as any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each speaker in the order of their hands raised. And the mayor has designated a time limit for today's meeting with a countdown timer shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. We do ask that you please do stay within your time limit and we look forward to receiving public comment from you. Thank you. Now back to Mayor Roberson.
We'll see, we'll see how this, this all works and we're very pleased to hear we have a secure Zoom. Yes, I know when Zoom was first developed, there were some technical and security issues. So we're very pleased because I think this will be a more open format for everyone. So I'd like to ask our acclaimed city clerk Clementine to introduce the city council, please.
Yes, council member Albert.
Here.
Council member Hafa.
Here.
Council member Smith.
Here.
Council member Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
And I'm here as well and you all will get an opportunity to meet our incredible staff as we go forward. But it's always a good idea, I think, to let people know who we are. So we will go to public comments. These are any comments that are not agenda items, things that you'd like to share with the council and our city staff. And if you leave a contact and if it's within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey, we will get back to you. We always appreciate the input that we receive from people because you make our city better. So anything not on the agenda, if you wanted to speak to an agenda item, please wait and we'll give you a chance to do so when that comes up. All right, Nat, do we have general public comments?
Okay, let's, let's see if we have a public comment. Please, at this time, if you're in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand virtually and we'll take public comment from you. And there's instructions also, I read earlier, the phone number you can call in if you're watching us on television or on YouTube, the phone number 833-568-8864, the instructions are on your agenda. The first person who has their hand raised is Bob, oh, or we had Bob who raised his hand and lowered his hand. So, okay, here we go. We'll allow Bob to talk and if you could please state your full name, we would appreciate it.
Okay, this is Bob Petty, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Bob, welcome.
Hey, fantastic. Well, I just wanted to thank you, I don't know how many million times, for switching to the Zoom setup for the council meeting and the other board and commission and trustees meetings that we're going to have because as Nat knows, I've been a frustrated user of the old Google system and we just had a terrible meltdown of it when we were having our library board of trustee meetings recently. So anyhow, I just wanted to chime in about how appreciative I am that you went to this and if I can make it work, it's working. So thank you very much and carry on with all the important business, but I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate this.
Oh, good, thanks Bob, good to know.
Thank you, Bob. Let's see, anyone else who has public comment, please raise your hand now. If you're calling, we have a couple of callers, you could dial *9 to raise your hand. Okay, going once, going twice, using the new system, we have no other, no public commenters on items that aren't on the agenda today.
Okay, well, good. Bob Petty, our library board trustee was our first sample and I'm glad to hear that it went so well. All right.
Hey Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, Tyler.
And so what do those folks do, just to kind of reiterate, what do those folks do that, that are comfortable with the old process that went to YouTube and we're expecting the Chyron to pop up?
Sure, so the Chyron did pop up and what, the Chyron shows up on those, on both AMP as well as YouTube. So similar to how we were on Google Meet, you actually don't see it when you're in this meeting. What we're doing is folks can either join live on Zoom if they're in the app, but we also have the telephone call-in option. So.
Thanks, Nat.
There's still the toll-free number 833-568-8864 folks can call into and then they'll just have to enter in their meeting ID and then they've joined live, just like they did before. We're providing a toll-free number instead of a local 831 number, but it's a substitute.
Thank you.
Okay, on the consent, did we have anyone in the public who wanted to pull any of We'll either ask Clementine or Nat while they're taking.
Yep, for general public comment, again, if anyone wants to pull any items on the agenda, please raise your hand or dial *9, but we don't have any currently.
We have no advance notice.
Okay, thank you, that's our question. And then on item four, which is to create an administrative procedure for declaring dogs to be potentially dangerous and vicious, there has been an amendment to that, so we'll leave it on the consent, but there has been an amendment. Should we ask our accomplished city attorney Chrissy Davy to just explain what that amendment is, please?
Hi, certainly, we just added a paragraph to make it abundantly clear that any violation of that provision is also able to be charged as an infraction, a misdemeanor, or by administrative citation.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I would want to mention also that, and it's, it was in the public record since it was also sent to the city clerk, and that is, we, we got a very nice email from John Sherwin, who has given us four or five thoughts, recommendations with respect to our leaf blower ordinance where we banned fossil fuels. And, and so we want to be sure that's in the public record and we can have our staff take a look at those as we refine the ordinance going forward. So I wanted to make sure that we, you all received that, I believe, on your emails. So I wanted to be sure to make a note of that. So council members' questions or pull anything, council member Ed, please.
Yeah, just would like the item number three, if staff could present what work is going to be occurring in the three impacted areas. I know that it's pretty significant for my neighborhood and we've all, we've all been waiting a long time for Mar Vista, so I think the public would appreciate just a snapshot of, we're awarding the bid tonight, but what is that work going to be focusing on? And then also a comment on item four, when it's appropriate on the, I'm sorry, on item five, the leaf blower.
Okay, good. Well, let's, anyone else, council? All right, seen none, Ed, why don't we go ahead and pull three and four, that way we can deal with it separately. And I'm, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent.
Second?
Any discussion, public comment? We don't have any yet, all right. I, we still are going to do roll call even though we're on Zoom because that's the way under the governor's executive order that we vote. So we'll turn it over to Clementine again.
Yes, council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Williamson.
Yes.
Council member Hafa.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. All right, work construction for over a million and a quarter dollars to grant a construction for citywide rehab Measure S. And I thank you, Ed, for asking because I know I'm getting an email or two from people wanting to know the status of where are we? And so with that, we'll turn it over to our adept city manager, Hans Usler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three areas that are outlined in the agenda report and I will ask Steve Woodbury to fill this up with a little bit more meat than is written in the agenda report. The overall good news though is that at the present time in general, we will, we are receiving, knock on wood, favorable bid results. Bidding environment is pretty good for us and if you look at the agenda report, you see that our engineering estimate was actually below, that's where it should be, but was below the actual bid received. So with that, I hand it over to our public works director, Steve Woodbury.
Thank you, Hans. Yeah, as outlined in the agenda, essentially this, this work is a little bit more expensive than some of the other contracts that we've seen earlier and a little bit more focused work. That's because these particular areas are really doing reconstruction type work, a little bit more in-depth than some of the patch and repairs that we've been doing. On the, on the agenda is Mar Vista, as you are well aware, when the North Fremont, not North Fremont, when the roundabout project in Highway 68 was completed, we had a lot of cut-through traffic that did a lot of damage to that particular neighborhood and that area on Mar Vista as people were using that for cut-through. That work is now finally being replaced. Those areas will be redone, new curbs, gutters, ADA compliant ramps as appropriate through that area, as well as new pavement on Mar Vista. Additionally to that, you know, we'll do some work in the Casanova-Noll neighborhood, in the Ramona area, primarily, once again, these are areas where we're actually going to do reconstruction level and provide new pavement services as opposed to what the last contract we did was kind of a patch and repair. The areas are, seem to be smaller with the larger number, but that's because the level of work that's happening there is a little bit greater.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, council member Ed.
Yeah, the first item there, Steve, is the Mar Vista between Mona Vista Drive and Skyline. Does that involve new drains as well as improved sidewalks?
So if, if, if any sidewalks, there's not sidewalks throughout that entire area where there's sidewalk issues, we don't install new sidewalks with Measure P or S, but what we do is if there's something that has an existing ramp, we fix it and bring it to compliance. If there's an ADA crossing that, that needs to be installed, we install it with this project because of the level of work we're doing with the asphalt. So it's, it's kicking into the ADA requirement. So we're not installing new sidewalks in that area, we're not installing a new walkway there, but if there's an existing one that's defective, we'll fix that with the process.
Okay, great. Yeah, I know that's been an impacted area and we've been waiting for that one to, to get to us because it's a significant amount of work with a lot of underground work to be done. Also, at Munners and Abrego and Fremont, could you be a little more specific, what are we doing there?
So once again, there's, it's a pavement replacement in that area of downtown where there are ramps, there's a lot more ramps on that section of town than there are, of course, on, on Mar Vista. Those, all those ramps will have to be brought up to ADA compliance in that area and not in that section, but it is, once again, an asphalt replacement aspect as opposed to, it's a little more in-depth of a replacement as opposed to just a surface treatment.
Okay, great. And I did get a few calls about the island that's in front of the hotel in front of Denny's that's basically in that area. Is the work that's being done there waiting for this work to tie together?
So essentially that's happening through our Parks Division and they're looking through a beautification process, as I understand it, I was talking to Louis Marcuso the other day, and that's part of his crews that are making a little bit of beautification process with an island, that triangular little island in there. It was, it was a need of some work and it's happening there, that's not connected with Measure P or Measure S.
Okay, good. So that work is progressing on a timeline that's different than having to get this work done.
Coincidentally, it's in the same area, but it's, it's different timelines.
Yeah, great, great, thank you very much, much appreciated. The neighbors have all been anxious and just to point out that Measure S is helping us do that and the sales tax generates the funds to Measure S. And so of course, in coming years, the concern is what will the balance be available because our sales tax is down through the COVID period. So we're glad that we have the money to be able to do this now through Measure S and then other work through Measure X, but the losses of, of sales tax is going to impact some of our projects in the future. So it will still have projects moving, but it's not going to be as robust unless the sales tax are feeding Measure S and Measure X.
The work in front of Casa Munners on the island has been completed, council member Smith.
Okay, well, then they're fast because I got a call on Thursday, so that's awesome.
That call was probably outdated.
Thank you very much, Steve, appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it would, Steve, you might want to mention this, in that Measure P, which was the predecessor to Measure S, the idea with that in many ways was to take care of, of streets before they got to the point where they need, needed reconstruction. And, and so it was almost counterintuitive, why are you slurry ceiling, why are you taking care of these streets when you have others that are in worse shape? Well, the point there was, well, let's rescue and save those streets that we can. And then when the voters very nicely at 83% approve Measure S, then we were starting to get into street reconstruction and that's much more complicated. And so folks might have been waiting, say, well, I don't understand why my street wasn't done. Well, it's probably because that street's going to need reconstruction. And that's what, really what council member Ed brought up, these are more complex projects going forward and we expect to see more of those, I think, as well.
Yeah, well said, Mr. Mayor, and that's exactly correct. The first go-around, we were limited to certain streets that were approved through a process within Measure B, and now as the slogan was, let's finish the job. And that's what we're doing is we're bringing in different areas and trying to finish the job.
Yes, and it's, it was an eight-year sales tax, so as Ed pointed out, we'll have to see how badly COVID-19 and our lack of income has really been to hit this program, but we'll hope we'll rebound robustly and we'll be able to finish within that time parameter because we're two years into Measure S. Other council comments on this item? And public comments? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Alan, did you want to make a comment, I'm sorry?
Nope, I was just making a motion.
Thank you.
Council member Hafa?
Yes.
Council member Williamson?
Yes.
Council member Smith?
Yes.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Then Ed, I believe, item five was the one prohibiting fuel leaf blowers within residential lots and limiting hours throughout the city was something you wanted to talk about? Go for it, please.
Yes, some feedback I got, and I shared this with our city manager, had to do with possible deviations and creating some type of a internal policy so we don't have conflicts with construction in the future. One particular example was a plumbing contractor who does quite a bit of trenching and undergrounding and they, they currently use gas blowers for cleanup. And they find that it's, it's very, very much more, or a superior manner to be able to do that when the, the mud or dirt is partially wet. They're restricted by doing anything with clear water and cleaning up and washing down, so very cognizant of not violating the waste of water or putting anything down the drain, but refilling the holes. So, you know, we, we may have some of those requests in the future, so internally, we might have an opportunity to create some type of a construction site policy that's a permitted, permitted site that may, may be able to be granted some short-term use when it makes sense. So I would just leave that for internal support after we do this ordinance, that we go forward and create some way that we're considerate of the construction folks that may be dependent on more powerful gas blowers for short periods of time as they clean up and depart the sites. That may be in residential neighborhoods that are, you know, doing trenching or plumbing or, or snaking out debris, so they may need the use of this equipment to be able to clean up site for public safety purposes. That was all, just want to make sure we put that on the, on the record.
All right, other comments from the council members? And any public comment, Nat?
We haven't re-invited public comment on, on this one, but let's go ahead and do that now. Anyone who has comments regarding, regarding this item, please raise your hand. And I think we do have one, Bob. Thanks for rejoining, Bob, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Rejoining, what makes you think I left? I just have a question to clarify, the, the, the new ordinance has two points or two parts to it, and the second one says prohibits any leaf blowing before nine or after three, I believe. Does that mean that even if a gardener, let's say, is not using a gas-powered but is using either electric or maybe even a much quieter battery-operated one, he or she could not use it after 3 o'clock? I, if that's true, I object to that because a lot of these workers, like the one that comes to my house, he finishes up after 3 o'clock and I would want him to be able to use one of the quieter versions of leaf blower, not the gas, but either electric or battery-operated one when he's done at 4 or 5 o'clock. So I would like to, you know, make that statement and ask for clarification as to why the 3 o'clock cutoff if they're using the non-gas, non-fuel powered machine?
All right, thank you, Bob, we'll get an answer to your question here. Are there any other comments, Nat, that we know of?
Not that we know of, we've had the Chyron app regarding this item, we're voting currently on item five, correct?
Yes, all right, so could we have a staff response to Bob's question, please, with respect to the 3 o'clock cutoff? With respect to the three o'clock cutoff time?
Uh, it it can be any cut of time that the council likes to do. Keep in mind that a lot of neighbors feel already bothered by any noise coming from leaf blowers. Um, of course, it can be from nine to five or nine to four or eight to seven. It's it's the council's pleasure what times you do. There's no real um rationale behind it that has to have it between nine to three.
Yes, and and the email that we all received, again, from John Sherman, he did raise the whole point of hours of operation and would suggest that we have a conformity with our noise abatement directive already in place. So I think that would build right on what Bob was talking about. My my thought is if there's this, there's no absolute emergency time requirement on this, I think it would be good to take in the suggestions that we received by email from Mr. Sherman, Bob's input and and bring it back. Does that cause any heartburn? Is that okay with everybody?
It's okay with me, and I think the point about time is especially app.
Okay, so, yes, Hans?
Mr. Mayor, are you suggesting that you're not approving the second reading? But do you like staff to continue working on this? Or are you suggesting let's approve it the second reading and come back maybe in half a year or year and see how it has worked out?
Yes, e- either either way works. Uh, one can make a a case, I think, for trying to get it right the first time as much as we can. And and so it may come back, it may be other items, but hours of operation would be something we want to look at because I think Bob's point is made. So I think I would make just make a motion to continue this to our our next meeting and we're not rewriting everything, but just take in some of the public input, which was quite good. So that would be my motion.
I I would second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion, council, council member Tyler?
Yeah, if if I could, I'm not sure what exactly the direction is that we're giving staff other than kind of this ambiguous idea of looking at the time when we're going to be the ones that make the decision anyways and we already have that feedback from the public. So I'm I'm not sure exactly what us having more time is going to do other than it coming back at a later agenda. I I would just suggest that maybe we extend it to five o'clock. And that way, it covers some of the concerns that were expressed from the public comments.
Sure, that makes sense too without, yeah, and I'm I I could amend my motion to approve the ordinance and add a five o'clock in restrictive time. Thank you for that.
Um, so, Mr. Mayor?
That all right with the second?
Yeah, it would be, but I would I need a clarification from the city attorney. I know that we have uh on the fly sometimes tried to change second readings and added a few things. So I want to make sure that we're going to be congruent with what the expectation is for the city attorney. If we were to change the time of the ordinance in a second reading, does that mean it needs to still come back to us or would be, would we be done with it tonight by declaring a new time?
It it will come back for a second second reading since it is a substantive change.
Okay, so I so I think if we requested staff to come back with the change of time and I think I heard, um, so it would be in alignment with the already current ordinances for noise. Uh, there would be an eight to five suggestion. So if we were to resolve that and the motion passes, it would come back for the next reading and approval of the new time. So it has to come back for the rereading because we're changing substantive elements of the ordinance.
Yes. Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. So if we are um bringing it back to the next council meeting or council meetings past that, what what are we looking at? The reason I bring that up is that we have a timeline of January one. And if we push it to November, uh, then the whole reason to bring it to January one is so that people can adjust and purchase other um other leaf blowers. So if we are going to go to November, then I suggest we go from January to February, so it's the same amount of time.
Got it. Well, if we could shoot for our second meeting in October, I think we would be okay. And it's a substantive change. However, it's not huge. It's not time-consuming just to come back and rewrite.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, if it was a month later, then I would suggest that.
Nine, great idea. Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up with with Ed's comments. I I I think we're all in alignment, but I think you as a second are half, I'm not sure if you agreed to the mayor's change in the motion, because if if we go with the original motion, then it would, the second, this second would come back again. And then the changes would be at that council meeting and then it would come back again for a second of the second reading. So I think if we do it now, Dan. So if we do, if we do the changes now, it can come back at the next meeting, as I understand it from the city attorney, as the second reading, the first, the second reading of this second reading.
Yes.
That's true. So the question is whether I'm going to agree with it as the second or I was just waiting for the discussion to to get completed. But yes, I echo the amended First Amendment or the first motion, and I would agree with the the mayor's change.
Thanks for the clarification.
Very. I was just waiting for everybody to stop talking.
Yeah. Well, we want to reiterate that the council is committed to a green city at Green Monterey and we're certainly not changing the ordinance. We are in accord to ban fossil fuel-operated leaf blowers. So we want to make that clear. The only thing we're talking about here is reasonable times, as was brought up by the public.
Yeah.
Okay, a roll call, please.
Can I quickly clarify the most, the current final motion is continued but with amendments? Is that the correct way to look at it?
Yes, it's automatically continued if we make this amendment anyway, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes.
Okay, we made it. See, we're going to adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District meeting. So we're no longer the city council. We are all of a sudden a Ocean View Community Services District where we get a quarterly update. And is that something our city attorney does for us or planning? Okay, Chrissy, could you give us the update, which?
Certainly. Um, there's there's nothing really to add that isn't already in the agenda report. There's no real substantive update um to this district.
Do we need to take any action?
No, just receive a report, but do open for public comment.
Okay, so uh, is there any public comment on this?
We should have the chyron up and for those who are interested, please raise your hand if you have public comment on this item.
Item ten.
Item ten, yep. Okay, we do have one and our first caller is area code is seven six zero. And uh, you're going to have to dial, this is part of the one, it's a kind of a two-step process. After you raise your hand and we allow you to speak, dial star six to unmute yourself, please, so that we can hear you. There we go. Welcome.
Hello, this is Bob Fallis with Ruby Falls Fund, a developer for Canary Row Plaza. Appreciate you guys always continuing to push forward with our community service district for our water. Um, I just wanted to give the city council an update on status legally. We have finished the trial of the first developer Aqua Legacy. And their hearings were held over a two-week period um at the end of August. We have submitted as of Friday the final briefings from the attorneys. Uh, we feel very strong about our case, but that will be um decided by the judge over the next two weeks. With three weeks on the outside, we should have a final ruling on that. Um, in terms of our suit against the Coastal Commission for a writ of mandate that they should have issued the CDP to us as the proper owners back in August of two thousand seventeen. Um, that they finally, and we filed that back in January. Um, it has taken them up until last week to finally respond uh for bringing together all the files. And uh, we're going to pay the fee to have that, those files move forward. Um, but that case will probably be pushed back, I'm sure, by them, waiting to see what happens with our case here in the Superior Court. Um, but we're on there and surviving and hoping that Canary Row gets back to normal again. We see zero traffic during the week and a little bit um towards the end of the week, uh, on the weekends, we see a little bit of traffic there. And I've been very successful with giving the property to be used by the chart house and I appreciate the city assisting in that. Um, they have, uh, really, they hired six new people because of that tent. So it felt good to help the community with that and it'll be an ongoing success hopefully over the next several months. Um, just want to thank everyone in the city for your work and I'll keep working for making this project a success. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Yep. Uh, any other public comments? Please raise your hand. Otherwise, we will end public comment on this item.
And the raise your hand icon is in the, at least on my screen, in the lower right-hand corner, if folks are looking for it. That's actually one of the challenges of being on on Zoom or any of these kind of platforms. It's it's easy. Once you find the button you're supposed to click.
That's correct.
The lower right-hand corner for raise your hand.
And for those on the phone, it's uh dial star nine when you are in the system. It looks like, Mr. Mayor, we have no other public comment on item ten.
All right, good. Thank you. We'll re-adjourn, adjourn back to a city council meeting. We have two public hearings. The first one is a first reading by title only of an ordinance to rezone Lane Street to an H two city, city historic resource and authorize a Mills Act contract. And it's, this is always exciting because we get to learn about a historic house in our city. And we also are are happy that the state law does allow to give a break to people who designate their homes historic with their promise that they're going to keep it that way. And as a reward, so to speak, they get a reduction in their sales tax. So let's learn a little bit about two sixty Lane Street, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I pumped it directly over to Christie Sabdo, uh, who is shepherding this project from the start.
And Christie may be still muted, so just uh, as we're getting used to the Zoom platform here.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Christie.
Oh, thank you. And can you see my screen?
Yep, we can see your screen, yep.
I'm sorry, I was having, I was having issues unmuting myself.
No problem. You sure asked for a lot.
I was just sweating here a minute ago. Okay.
We're fine. We we work our way through this with kindness and we get there eventually.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Mayor Roberson and City Council. Uh, my name is Christie Sabdo. I'm associate planner with the City of Monterey. Uh, the property owner, um, John and Donna Wagner are requesting a rezone in Mills Act or two sixty Lane Street. Uh, the property was constructed in nineteen twelve in the vernacular cottage style. In nineteen forties, a breezeway and flat roof garage were constructed. And then in twenty fifteen, the wood windows were um restored in the house. March fourth, twenty twenty, the Architectural Review Committee approved the demolition of the existing garage that was constructed in nineteen forty. So it wasn't part of the original house. Um, and the construction of a new two-car garage with living space above the garage. And they would be connected um by a breezeway. There's an existing breezeway now. They would be constructing a new um breezeway. Uh, so the property is known as the Canepa residence. Uh, qualifies as a local historic resource based on California Register Criteria one and three. And there was an intensive survey received by architectural historian Seth Bergstein. And staff recommends a rezone of two sixty Lane Street from R three five to R three five H two and um resolution authorizing a Mills Act contract for the property. Uh, I'm available for any questions.
All right, is is there anyone uh who owns the property uh who wanted to make a presentation or anything that we know of?
I know that they didn't want to make a presentation, but uh they may raise their hand and call in to answer any questions.
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you for the overview. Very exciting. So we'll take uh any public comment on this?
Yeah, our first public comment, and we have a chyron up, so uh please raise your hand if you, once you've called in. But we do have, it looks like, uh, oh, we just lost Donna Wagner and if you could unmute yourself, uh, we'll take your public comment.
Okay, so hello, I don't know, can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you. There's a little bit of echoing.
Okay, so both John and I are here. We're both the owners of two sixty Lane Street. And um I guess if there's any questions that any of you have, I just want to tell you it's been an absolute joy and pleasure and feels like a real blessing to have had the opportunity to try to maintain the historic value of this home because it was very much a part of the fishing community. And I know the Canepa family was very much a part of this community. Um, so I'm, our goal from the very beginning has been to represent the family and represent the fishing history that's prominent. One of the things that was really important to me, if you notice in some of the pictures of the back of the house, I did not want to get rid of the Monterey deck. The deck that is right off the main part of the house, looks like the second story if you're downstairs. But that main part, it's not a big deck, but it's a classic Monterey deck. And I just never wanted to get rid of that or change that because I felt it had value specifically to this area. I guess I could lower my hand. I don't know if there's any other questions or if I should mute myself, what I should do next.
Yep, you're you're fine. Uh, that's, we we usually, uh, if if there are questions, we can uh reach back out. But thank you for your public comment.
Sure.
Yes, and thank you very much for taking care of that historic house. I'm just wondering, as we all know, Teresa Canepa served on our city council for over twenty, twenty years as well as Parks and Rec and she and her husband Louis uh lived in New Monterey. Her mother and father lived in Old Town. I imagine they would be related to this Canepa family too. So that that's kind of a bit of a very fun connection to uh our, our Teresa.
We we have a public comment also from Bob Fallis, uh, who has, we raised his hand. So we'll take that and thanks for joining us, Bob.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, City Council. Uh, one thing I've got to say about Monterey that is just so enjoyable of living here is to see the old houses and to really embrace the histories that this country brings. And we uh sort of have a problem in some parts of the country not appreciating that. And I really thank the city and its council members and all the staff for really working and helping people to preserve that history. Um, something I think that's very important that the children can see that, they can learn from it. And something which I look to do is really press the whole history of Monterey in our history center down on the Canary Row Plaza. And I'm particularly looking for any old fishermen or old people of ninety years of age, a hundred years of age, whatever, like to video them and capture that as a history log that we can utilize for area schools or across the country to create a history plan and even trying to tie up with ancestry dot com where you could put your DNA in and pull up a video of your family member that might be on video of log that we would do here in the area. So I really thank the homeowners for their efforts and the expense they take in terms of doing that. I really ask the city council to continually think of new ways to support homeowners or any business owner that has a property that's historic that we can preserve that. I think it's something that adds great value to this community. And uh, really, I hope everyone has a great day today. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, we have no other public comment on this item, number eleven. And back to Mayor Roberson.
Yes, we're back. Okay, you still, there we go. All right, um, unless there are any council questions, are we ready to move on the uh the ordinance?
I'll move to approve.
Uh, second with a comment.
All right, Ed, please.
Yeah, just want to uh call out, we see these, uh, we get the easy part. We usually get all of this material that's presented to us. Uh, we briefly go through it and we usually spend about much less than ten minutes um making the fund vote to preserve pieces of our history. But I want to call out those that work on a project like this and our historical arts uh in the preservation committee that goes through this and much. in the Preservation Committee that goes through this in much more deliberative step. We rely on them to do all the hard work and just much appreciated our historical community and our commission that works on this. It makes it easy for us to say yes to something like this.
And any other comments? Roll call, please.
Struggling with the new buttons, sorry. Councilmember Willie Simpson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
And yes, for me as well. Item 12 is to deny an appeal of a planning commission's decision to approve a single-story addition at a single-family dwelling at 816 Lily Street. The appellant is Catherine Baden. My apologies if I didn't get the last name correctly pronounced. Who, as the appellant, has submitted a letter which all of us have received and read. So we want to make sure that the appellant knows that, that it is in the public record and that we have received her letter, which is going to be the way she wants to appeal this decision. And then we have the owners Carolie Byrd and Mary Ellen Eglington. And so we'll be hearing some presentations in a moment. So the first thing is, did any of our council members have any ex parte meetings with anyone? And which is fine, just let us know. And I see shaking heads. And I will say Catherine copied me on her emails and my responses were always, thank you very much. I appreciate hearing from you and continue to work through the system and the process. We never discussed the pros and cons or any details. It was simply my response to her outreach. And so with that, we'll go back to the city attorney for any process direction that we might need on this.
Other than the ex parte disclosures, otherwise we'll have a staff presentation, followed by the applicant presentation, the appellant's statement, I think is being entered into the record, but she may or may not call in. And questions and public comment, and then finally council deliberation and decision.
Okay, very good. So with that, we will go to Chris Schmidt, one of our admirable planners, who's going to make the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, Mayor. And my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a Senior Associate Planner for the city. And I have been working with the appellant and the applicants for this project. We'll go ahead and share my screen. And can everybody see my presentation so far? Okay, thank you. Okay, so yes, we're looking at an appeal of the Planning Commission and ARC approval of the preliminary and final architectural review at 816 Lily Street, a first-story addition and deck. Staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and approve the project. Just a bit of background information about the site. The site is located in the New Monterey neighborhood. And it's Zone R15, which is our single-family residential neighborhood, has a general plan designation of low-density residential, and it contains an existing single-family residence. And that house is single-story. Further background information, so projects like this are eligible for administrative approval. So in September 2019, this project was administratively approved by myself without sending the required notices and the story poles were not constructed. In June of this year, 2020, the neighbor next door at 824 Lily Treatments, Bedan, contacted staff about the noticing, that she had not received any noticing. City staff ordered a stop work, stop work order was issued. And the story poles were immediately constructed and the notices were sent. At that point, the neighbor had requested that the ARC review the project. And under, as I mentioned, under normal circumstances, when these notices are sent, if we do not receive any comments or requests for ARC review, staff can approve the project if it meets all of the development standards. In August of this year, the ARC approved the project and found no unreasonable impacts. And that application was appealed to the Planning Commission, who so approved the project, finding no unreasonable impact or need for revisions. And I just wanted to very quickly go over City Code Section 38-189D, which really just outlines the requirement for noticing projects that involve construction of a new building, an increase in height, or additional floor area require noticing. And then projects that involve construction greater than one story or an increase in height or other projects as deemed necessary by the ARCP Planning Commission or City Council may require story. So this project does involve an increase in height and it does involve new floor area. This, this table just shows that the project is consistent with the development standards. If we have questions about it, we can refer back to it. And then here we see the existing site. You see, this is the existing home without any of the additions shown. That space in orange. And then here we see the existing on the left and proposed floor plan on the right. Again, the existing is orange and the proposed is that purple there, including the 477 additional bit of floor area and deck. Here is the existing home. It's a fairly small cottage. And it's very similar, it's in a very similar style to much of the New Monterey neighborhood. Here we see the elevations, again, using the same color scheme. Orange is the existing where purple is proposed. The designer for the project also created these renderings to show the proposed addition at the rear. The top image shows the view of the street, whereas the bottom image shows the addition at the rear. And you'll note there's, as I mentioned, an increase in height and the new gable roof is perpendicular to the existing gate. So there were several impacts identified by Ms. Bedan at 824 Lily Street. She primarily had concern for the loss of view of the trees to the south as viewed from her second-level deck. She also had mentioned concerns for privacy. And then the other primary concern was noise impacts due to construction, specifically because we are required to shelter in place due to the COVID-19 pandemic. She requests a revision to the plans to review the trees that would be blocked by the, by the project. And then a delay until after the COVID-19 shelter-in-place order is lifted. So here's the appellant's home. You can see it is directly next door to the project site on the left-hand side here, or at least to the left of the project site. It is this two-story home. It's on a fairly narrow lot, as you can see from the aerial on the bottom left-hand side, which I've highlighted. And then here are a couple of photos provided by the, by the appellant, the neighbor. This is from their, from her interior of her home. You can see some of the trees that will be blocked. I do want to point out, and I can return to the initial aerial slide that showed the views and in relation, you know, where the bay views would be in relation to these views here. And I think I do show another slide actually that shows it. Here's a view from the second-story deck. I think this would be from a standing position. And then another view from the seated position. Again, those are the trees that would be blocked. And then a view from her rear yard showing just the height of, of the development. This was a photo that was provided by the neighbor. It was taken from the Redfin Real Estate app. I think this was a picture that was taken before Ms. Bedan purchased the home. And I think the point of this photo was just to detail that the project does not impact her bay view. As you can see from the arrows, the, the project site is, is south of, of her home. And there's, there's no impact whatsoever to the bay view. Just a more photos from the applicants. This is from their project site. So I will add, by the time that the stop work order was issued, they'd already begun a significant amount of foundation work. I think it came to the cost of $30,000 at this point. So you can see that in the photo on the right, and this image shows the neighboring home straight, straight ahead from this image. This image is just to show where her windows are, I believe, viewing towards the home. They're located basically above the staircase. And I, I believe the, the previous window with the stained glass was inside of this room here, just past the stair. And then the last photo, this is just showing the view of the neighbor who's actually south of, of the project site, who also did provide a letter character reference of the property owners. And this was just provided by the property owners as well. So, so staff was able to make, staff, the ARC and the Planning Commission were able to make the required findings for approval. It basically meets the development standards. It's single-family in character. It's compatible with the surrounding area. And it matches the style of the existing home. Although there were view impacts that were identified, the impacts were not reasonable. There's no impact to the bay view and there's a small impact to some landscape views. And then the temporary impact to the living environment is not unreasonable as well. Construction will take a period of five to six months. The next finding is that the, the project is consistent with city plans and guidelines. It is. And then lastly, basically all of the features of the project are appropriate for Monterey and the New Monterey neighborhood. So staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and approve the project. I am available for questions. I believe the appellant provided her comments. And those were given to the City Council and then the applicant's representative, Mr. Dan Byrd, I believe is on the line as well, and I think he has some words to say. So thank you.
Okay, Chris, thanks for the visuals, particularly that always is very helpful. Council questions at this point? Any questions for our staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. So I do have a question for staff. When it comes to view shed and blocking view sheds, I would assume that the ocean view is the only New Monterey view that can be blocked. Is there any other view, tree views, street views, where it says that it has to be a reasonable blockage? You see where I'm going with that? Who determines whether it's the ocean view that should be blocked? I'm just curious about that.
I think you're referring to our shared view policy.
Yes, exactly.
And does it, and what does it apply to? Okay. Chris, can you answer that or someone?
Yes, that's right. So our, the plan, the New Monterey Plan and the design guidelines for single-family homes primarily recommend protection of bay views. They also recommend that buildings do not overly block views from neighboring structures. You know, in the case of a project like that, or really any project throughout the city, we find that, you know, some amount of view is going to be blocked. And in this case, you know, this, this neighbor has significant views of the bay. This project is fairly modest in size. It's, it's only a one-story addition. They could have actually constructed an additional six feet in height. You know, we consider, you know, can, can they lower that addition? And this is supposed to be a requirement home, so they're not really looking to add stairs to the home that might make it harder to get around. So I think we found that this was not an unreasonable addition. You know, there's still some view of trees just really adjacent to the home and, and as well as trees of the bay. And I believe that, that, you know, there still be very nice views from that deck.
Okay, Councilmember Ed, where, I don't see you, but I think you had a question.
Sorry, I clicked the wrong one. The question I had, Chris, or staff, was a photo, Chris, you showed of the other side, the other neighbor, that I don't know, and you, you blinked out with my signal. What did you say about the other neighbor? And it was the opposite photo showing the, the foundation. Yes. I missed what you said about that neighbor. I had a technology glitch. It, it did not give, come through clear.
Sure. So, so in the packet, the, the property owners, they, they had asked this neighbor to provide a, a letter and support, which, which they did. They provided character reference and were fully supportive of the project. And I think the point of this photo was just to show this is the neighbor, the, the scale of the home next door. And I really think that was it, yeah.
Okay. And what is the height from the ground to the pitch of the new construction, the gable roof?
It is 19 feet.
Okay. And that is within the guidelines of, of our building construction?
Correct. We can go up to 25 feet.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Well, of course, only you see Ed and me anyway, so. So as soon as we get back to our tiles, that would be great. So then the next step would be to hear from the applicant. I believe Mr. Dan Byrd is going to make a presentation. So welcome to our meeting and we look forward to hearing from you.
Great. And we've promoted Mr. Byrd to panelist so that he can present his, deliver his presentation as a, as a panelist and as a applicant.
Great. Thank you very much for your time today. My name is Dan Byrd. I'm calling on behalf of the owners of 816 Lily. I hope you've had enough chance to review our letters, both from myself and from our legal counsel outlining the reasons that we feel are, with our situation and our modest project, we should move forward. We've appreciated the opportunity to resolve the issue and get back to our remodel without any further delay. The project meets all of the city's guidelines. We followed all of the processes. We've gone to the Architectural Review Committee and received a unanimous approval. We've gone to the Planning Commission and received an overwhelming unanimous approval. Just to clarify, there are no hills in that direction. There are treetops. And if she adjusts her seat by about 38 degrees to the left, she'll have a wonderful view of a tree that is within 15 feet of her seat. So with that, I'd just like to thank you for expediting the process for resolving this appeal. And we'd just like to get moving forward so we can sell our house in San Jose and get the grandparents moved into Monterey and enjoy their retirement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Byrd. Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Then the appellant has submitted a letter outlining her appeal. We just want to make, and we have read it and we've received it. It's in the packet in the public record as well as everything that Mr. Byrd was talking about with respect to emails, presentations, planning commission, architectural review, and so on. So now is the appellant with us or we will just rely on the letter that she sent to us?
We will be relying on the letter. It doesn't appear that the appellant has joined the meeting and, and Ms. Baden's correspondence has stated that she submitted a letter instead of speaking at today's meeting.
And we want to reassure her and the public that we received and we've read it more than once. All right, let's go to public comments. See if there's anyone out in the public who wants to remark on this hearing, please.
If anyone is interested in speaking on this item, item number 12, please raise your hand now or dial star nine to raise your hand. It does not appear that we have any at this time, and we've, we've actually had the chyron up for, for quite some time. So no public comment.
All right, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the city council for discussion and action.
Mayor, I move that we deny the appeal.
A second.
All right, any discussion? Councilmember Vice Mayor Allen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to support the motion. And I think these kinds of changes are always difficult for folks. I know that I'm certainly sensitive to changes in height or mass of a home next to another home. But in this case, seeing the pictures, I think that this is a very reasonable change. I don't think that it I don't think that it unduly impacts the neighbors' views. And I think the design is appropriate. So I'm going to support the motion.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I concur with your comments. And we had an opportunity, my wife and I, to check it out. And it looks like there's a really nice view from the appellate's house. And so, which she is being able to retain. And as you say, we live in a city where people are adding on to their homes. New Monterey in particular, people are taking very good care of their homes. The little cottages look so great. My wife comments every time we go over there how pretty the homes are. And I think the one that the applicant's home is a nice one. And I think they were very thoughtful in what they are suggesting because it could have easily, even under our current ordinance, has just been a two-story tower. So I thought it was very well-designed and considerate of everybody around them. And if there's no one else, we'll go to roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. So public appearance, the next topic is to adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the fiscal year budget for various funds and capital improvement projects. As we know, we are dealing with a triple, if not a quadruple pandemic. If you think about the COVID-19 and health issues, the impact to our economy and every single government in the United States and the budget, and the social justice pandemic, which we will be dealing with this evening, as well as climate warming. So all of these are happening at the same time. And we really are appreciative of our staff staying on top of the budget. We do get questions about how are we doing? And what are we forecasting? And so I think these updates are really important. When we adopted a budget, it's a dynamic, organic document because things change. And so we appreciate the constant updates. So we're going to be going to the Alacratus Finance Director. You can look that one up. And yes, I'm on my A's. I redid my adjective list. And so, Hans, you want to jump directly to Lauren, who's just, all of you. Our staff has just spent a lot of time on this budget to make sure we can maintain as many services as we can. So Hans.
You dealt with the general fund deficits a couple of times over the past six months. This is another act and action requested to adjust the budgets in our special funds. And with that, I hand it over to our finance director, Lauren Lo.
All right. Let's see, I'm going to try to share. Good evening, council members of the public. This is a brief overview of what we're considering as other funds and also the addition of a couple of CIP project updates. It's a high-level report because we've had extensive conversations about this. So we're going to go over just a quick briefing of the COVID fiscal 19, COVID-19 fiscal impact for the general fund and the other funds. We'll look at the revenue reductions and also look at the appropriation reductions. Importantly, in this discussion is talking about strategies similar to the general fund. We're looking at a hybrid strategy of ongoing reductions and also one-time reductions. And for administrative efficiency, we're bringing to council a couple of CIP project amendments. So then that way, it'll just save us time down the road to not have to bring a separate staff report to council as well. With that, this slide here summarizes the fiscal impact. As the mayor stated in the opening, COVID-19 has been a devastating impact financially for the city. In the general fund fiscal 20, we anticipated about $13 million loss or about 16%. We came in at about a little under 12, 11.6. Fiscal 21's loss is anticipated to be 18 million within the general fund, and that's about 21.7%. We've addressed those separately. Councils addressed them in collaboration with the community and in collaboration with employees as well. So tonight, we're looking at these various other funds. We estimate that the fiscal impact from COVID is about $7.6 million. This one's very difficult to read, but for purposes of transparency, I wanted to put it on this screen. It's also in the staff report, which is a little bit easier to view. This is the screenshot of the revenue amendments, which is a reduction of $7.4 million. Most of this has to do with COVID. Some of it has to do with some program adjustments. So I want to call your attention to some of the funds that really are pretty substantial. The ones that have the COVID impacts are the ones in front of you. So in particular, Measure PNS, which is our street infrastructure pavement rehab funding. In the prior conversation, the mayor and council talked about this. So Measure PNS and Measure X, which was this TMC measure, those two right there, you could see is pretty substantial. $2 million reduction and $200,000 reduction from TMC. Marina Fund and also the Thailand's Fund have leases. And our leases are based on gross receipts. And so we certainly will have some modifications because of how our leases are arranged. So you could see there, the Marina Fund and the Thailand's Funds has some substantial reductions as well. The parking fund has a lot to do with the amount of tourism we have, the visitors and those that would actually contribute to our parking fund. So $2.7 million there. Last but not least, as a part of the hybrid solutions for the general fund, we recommended a one-year suspension of the vehicle replacement funding, setting that money aside. So we're suspending it for one year, and that's what you see on your screen. So these are the ones I really wanted to call our attention to relative to this COVID discussion. Moving on to the expenditure or the appropriation side, we're actually proposing to amend the spending by 300,000. Some of that has to do with position budgets, separation of employment terminations, and then some of the layoffs, and then also due to freezing vacant positions as well, and shifting general fund positions and modifying those to PMSA duties so that they can be reimbursed. We also have some cleanup in the other categories, such as professional services and contracts, namely because the parking fund has a contract for policy service. We actually had about a $600,000 savings because we didn't incur that. And so we're actually proposing to reduce our budget for that savings as well. As for the CIP projects, in particular, the street pavement projects and other improvements in consultation with the Public Works Department. In response to the COVID impacts, we will be modifying our CIP design and bid to come within the reduced funding sources. And certainly, we're having to use some of our working capital to make this work. As mentioned in the opening, we are presenting to you a couple of CIP items. The new equipment at the parking garages, the electric vehicle charging stations, a $50,000 appropriation there. And then the waterfront resource recovery project, which has been on the books for a while. The bids have come in, they actually came in favorable. So at this junction, we're asking council to appropriate those funds. Before you, as a resolution, to amend the prior budget documents to incorporate these changes. And we're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. It's always a great presentation, very clear and understandable. Nat, do we have any public comment?
Let's take a look and see if anyone would like to speak. Please raise your hand. There are only a handful of folks here who joined the actual Zoom meeting and we don't see any callers yet. But there is a 10-second delay on YouTube and a little bit longer for him. So. No one's called in yet.
All right. Well, if they do, we can certainly get back to them. Council comments and action?
Just one question.
Yes, Councilmember Ed, please.
Yeah. Lauren, you listed there in that last section under capital improvement projects and amendments. The second item is called the waterfront resource recovery facility. I think I know what that is, but for those that are listening, could you drill down on that a little bit?
I have a question for the Public Works Director there.
I can help out quickly. This is a fancy name for a new compactor room that will be located in the waterfront area and will replace the, will be the new compactor room for the very much dilapidated compactor room that is currently located at the end of wharf number one. It will contain compactors for wet food, but also for recyclables, et cetera, and will be a much cleaner operation and away from wharf number one. So it's a fancy name for a new compactor land recycling center.
And if I might add to that, that's been a project that I've been monitoring for years, decades. Thank you for that, Hans. I'm so much looking forward to that. As you know, with all of the state laws and many of the mandates that the state enforces, don't necessarily make sense on a local level. But this is one where I think does make a lot of sense. As you know, the state is requiring the recycling of wet waste. And if you think about wet waste and that a gallon of water or wet waste or anything coming out of the restaurant weighs eight pounds, you can imagine that people or moderate disposal is not going to be picking up a dumpster. It would weigh tons. So this new center is going to be able to accommodate any kind of wet waste, which will be in barrels that are manageable to our district. And as we know, recycling of various plastics, aluminum glass is already ongoing. So this is really going to be a recycling center. I would anticipate that it's going to be a low, low level of waste going through this facility. So I'm very excited to see that this is going to happen. Anyone else? A council member, Alan? And we'll go to Dan, please.
Um, yeah, I have two questions. The first one is regarding the last year's closing balance. We were projecting a $13 million deficit. I just want to make sure I heard right. So is sort of our latest information now 11.6? Because that's actually, you know, good news. Obviously, a lot of bad news still, but I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Correct. We presented that to council last month. And that was a part of our preliminary unaudited fiscal 20 general fund report with also a small snapshot of July, August as well.
Okay, good. And then, but somebody on staff indicate how many EV charging stations are we going to be installing?
Yeah, we are working those numbers right now. But I'll let Public Works Director retreat and answer in more detail. I don't think we have a definite number yet, though, so.
So we have a lot of work heading towards an EV front. This investment we're looking at right now really installs two brand-new facilities and the circus lot near Cannery Row, as well as replacing the existing charging locations within the Cali P garage and the downtown garage. So we're looking at six that'll come in fully installed, less than that cost. We just have a number that there's a placeholder, if you will. We expect it to come in less than that. I say that and I'm taking the opportunity from your question, but reality is we're looking at another larger-scale operation to install a center of EV stalls within the garages downtown. And we're working towards a much larger number than that, which would be triple that number located here within the city. So we're working forward to try to bring those options forward to council.
Good, thanks so much. I'm a big supporter of that. And it's very important to transforming our transportation system in the future. So appreciate that.
Hey, Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you. I wanted to make a comment or actually ask a question about Measure PNS. And I think it was already sort of answered in the consent item. But seeing that there's $2 million that'll be less collected, does that impact the current projects that we're in now? Or I assume through the winter months, we won't be doing anything with our street repairs. Does that affect the projects next summer? Or the projects that are currently on the docket? Somebody from staff?
I can take a stab. That's projects coming forward, councilman. Basically, what we're looking at is the next wave of projects going forward. Nothing that's been, everything that's been bid and awarded will continue as we presented it. It impacts how we will package future projects size-wise for mantra funding balances. So it may be just a tad bit smaller. We may do one less paving project with $2 million less or something along those lines.
So it doesn't affect the current projects that are being, that are going through right now?
Correct.
That answers my question.
Yeah. For example, the one we approved tonight, for example, that doesn't affect that one at all.
All right. Any other comments? Councilmember Tyler?
I just thank you, staff, for putting this together. It's, I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate this also just being an update for us on kind of where things are. I did just want to put one thing out. And I wanted to say something at the last council meeting when this, when this was on the agenda. But this was something that I was pushing for during the budget discussions prior to the end of last fiscal year. And it seemed like we agreed to it, which was the idea of adding the public engagement element to the mission of the COVID-19 response. And it was missing in the last presentation, and it's missing in this one as well. So I'm just hoping that moving forward, since we agreed on that as a council, that we can make sure that we include that in there. Not saying that we're not doing a good enough job. I'm just saying, just making sure that we're emphasizing that as part of our mission and goal regarding the response, particularly in the context of our budget.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to move on the resolution then? I'll make a motion to approve?
Second?
Okay. Final discussion point is we have to remind ourselves that we're talking about special funds this evening, unless I'm wrong, and not general funds.
Right.
Okay. And so in case folks are wondering, well, you've got general funds, and I know we've got facilities that are open, et cetera. But this, these funds are separate, just as if you at home maybe have a fund that's separate that is for specific needs. So these funds can only be spent in specified ways, not for the general fund. So just for clarification. So without further discussion, roll call, please.
Who's first this time? Councilmember Hafa? That was, yes? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes, for me as well. Well, thank you, everybody, for another very productive afternoon. We will take a recess and see everyone at seven o'clock.
We're live from downtown Monterey. Now we're not, from home, zooming to you live. Hi, everybody. Welcome to our continued meeting of the Monterey City Council. We did not have a closed session, so obviously there's nothing to announce. What we're going to do in a moment is to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And Nat Roganasa Thera, our able assistant city manager, got it right this time, is going to show a flag, then I will invite you to join me in the pledge.
Can you bring that down a little bit, Nat, so we can see our flag?
Yep, there we go, almost.
Almost there. Good old Colton Hall, 1850 California Constitution written there in English and Spanish. All right, so if everyone would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was just very good. Thank you, folks. And it's my pleasure to introduce your caring city council, starting with Dan Albert. I'll give you a wave. Alan Hoffa. Ed Smith won't be able to join us this evening because of a prior commitment. He's on the road as we speak. All the best to you, Ed. And Tyler Williamson. And I'm Mayor Clyde. It's an honor to be the mayor of the city that we love and take care of together. We're going to go to continued public comments. Any comments not on the agenda, if you want to share some thoughts about agenda items, we ask for your forbearance and patience, please. And these are items that should be within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And we look forward to you bringing things that you're thinking about as the public and what you'd like your city to think about and do. If you leave a contact, we'll have our staff respond to you and work with you. And that's what it's all about, taking care of each other and working together. And so with that, we'll invite any public comments. You can do that as a Zoom participant. You can also phone in. And so before we do that, perhaps I will ask Nat once again to kind of provide the framework of how people can participate in our meeting, please, Nat.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mayor Riperson. And as a reminder for those who maybe folks who just joined this evening, we are using a new platform starting tonight for council meeting, and it's Zoom Gov, which is a secure platform. We encourage you to join through this method because there is no lag time. You're connected live directly into the meeting in real time. The meeting is also streamed on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay, and also on Comcast Channel 25, which has about 90 seconds of delay. If you plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using the Zoom app or the Zoom interface on your computer or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate any delay that might occur. To join, please use the link or the phone number that's listed on the agenda, and you'll find that on our website as well if I search monterey.org. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864. It's a toll-free number, again, 833-568-8864. Then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333, and if you're prompted to enter our participant ID, you can press pound again. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom are available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, you can raise your hand using the Zoom app or if you're connected by phone, dial star nine to virtually raise your hand. When you're called upon, please dial star six to unmute yourself. We ask that public commenters, please turn off all television or computer speakers or go to another room when you're connected by telephone because any background noise will cause interference with the broadcast. I'll be calling on each speaker in the order of their hands raised. And there will be a countdown timer also shown on the screen, depending on how long the mayor is designated for the time limit. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Please stay within the time limit, and we look forward to receiving public comment this evening.
All right, good. Well, we'd love to give people three minutes for them to share their thoughts with us, again with the reminder that if you leave a contact, we will, the city staff will follow up. It's always their pleasure to help solve problems.
Great. Do we, I'm not sure if we lost the mayor?
I should still be with you.
Nope, you're still here. Okay, super. So what we'll do is go ahead and open up public comment. And the first caller is, the last three digits is 990 and area code is 509. And you'll just have to dial star six to unmute yourself. Let's see. We've unmuted them. Let's try again, see if they can dial star. This is the other step that we need, dial star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi there, welcome.
Hi, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robertson and city council members. For your convenience and mine, I'm letting you know I'm on a world timer myself. And so I'd like to say, I want to make everyone aware of the case where an environmental human rights lawyer, Steve Donziger, won a $9.8 billion lawsuit against Chevron, formerly known as Texaco, for dumping toxic drilling mud containing mercury, lead, copper, and other noxious chemicals into 1,500 miles of Amazon forest. As Mr. Donziger was arguing the case against Chevron in Ecuador back in 2009, Chevron said expressly its long-term strategy was to demonize him. And since then, Chevron has hired investigators to track him, created publications to smear him, and hired hundreds of lawyers from 60 different law firms to defend themselves from having to pay up so they can clean up their terrifying legacy of environmental harm. As a result, Donziger has been disbarred, his bank account frozen, he has a lien on his apartment for legal fees, and as of August, he has been under house arrest with an ankle bracelet. Donziger represented 30,000 farmers and indigenous people in the Amazon over Chevron's massive contamination. Were they all liars as our corrupt judicial system rules, even with a photographic evidence to prove Donziger's case? Chevron countersued Dr. Mr. Donziger with charges of racketeering and bribery. The Ecuadorian judge Alberto Guerra claimed Donziger bribed him during the original trial. Guerra later admitted he lied and changed the story many times. And Chevron has paid Guerra hundreds of thousands of dollars and arranged for Guerra and his family to move to the States with substantial monthly sum. You can read about his case online. And why I'm relating this to you is to show you that our system is so fascist now, meaning governments and their judicial parts, so ruled by corporations, that we no longer have protection from environmental harm. Our only asset is ourselves. So please do not buy Chevron gas. Make this a worldwide effort, share it on Facebook, Twitter, and show Chevron, we the people still hold the power of the purse. Thank you so much for allowing me this.
Okay, if you'd like to state your name, please, please do so for the record. You're invited to, not required.
That was Lorna.
Lorna, okay, Lorna Moffett, very good. Thank you. And our next caller is last three digits, 204. Again, you'll need to unmute since you're calling by phone, unmute yourself by dialing star six.
Good evening, Tom Rowley calling to say that I think you're switched to the new system, having watched the afternoon session and again now. Everybody's face is clear, not fuzzy. We can see the wrinkles on the mayor's brow and also the staff shows up brilliantly. So I'd like to compliment the city for switching over to a format for your meetings that is definitely easier to see and easier to follow. So thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate the feedback. Let's, let's see, we have no other callers for items that are not on today's agenda.
And we always appreciate everybody's input. Let's see, here we go. Good. And we appreciate everyone's input. So we will continue into our presentations. We're pleased to have with us this evening Kelsey Scanlon from the Monterey County Office of Emergency Services. And so I think I'll just go ahead and turn it over to our alert city manager, Hans Usler, who can make the introductions and explain why this is on our agenda, please.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the title, Alert City Manager. It cannot be better with introducing Kelsey because Kelsey is also always very alert to the extent that, that we worked with Kelsey and her team over several weekends. I can remember that we spent mornings on, on meetings talking about various issues. The last one, I believe, was when we had the fire activity in Salinas. So Kelsey is working for the Monterey County Office of Emergency Services. And with that, I think I'll let the chief do appropriately a public safety fire introduction to Kelsey Scanlon.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So all the thunder's already been stolen on, on all the different announcements. But a, we're here to talk about our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a document that provides a framework for actions we can take as a jurisdiction to mitigate the risk of hazards that we determine to be a threat to the community. Our plan was originally adopted in 2007 and then updated in 2016, and it's due for another update. We are very fortunate that we can participate with the county and other jurisdictions in the county to do a multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. And we're even more fortunate that we have the awesome Kelsey to take the lead on that project. And so part of the project is that we have to do presentations to the public, and a city council meeting is a wonderful forum for that. And so that's what Kelsey's going to do this evening is provide us a presentation on the plan and the process. So Kelsey, take it away.
I'm not sure what else there's to say. You guys pretty much covered it all. No, I'm joking. It's really a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for inviting me to speak at this meeting. As city manager, Hans had already mentioned, I've had the pleasure and opportunity to work with a bunch of city staff. And their work ethic is outstanding from top, top to bottom. It's just world-class, so you can all pat yourselves on the back for that. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. All right. So as we had mentioned already, today we're going to cover the Monterey County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. The first iteration was in 2007, and then the second was in 2016. Both were approved by CALOES and FEMA. So the plan is set to expire in March 2021. We've been working on updating this plan for almost a year now in coordination with all 12 cities and three special districts. The ultimate purpose of hazard mitigation is to reduce the risk of any type of hazard, whether it be natural, technological, or man-made, and the threat it poses to health, safety, the general quality of life, our natural environment, and the economy. So by implementing mitigation measures, we can reduce both the mid- and long-term risk of damage and loss that a community might experience. Which leads us to a plan. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan is ultimately a formal document developed not in isolation, but very much in coordination with our local partners and nonprofits, community leaders, et cetera. Anybody who really has a stake in the long-term local vision for their community and reducing the overall risk that the community might face. Some of the results of an effective hazard mitigation plan are the protection of life and property. You can see an actual correlation to the economic losses and the reduction of those losses. It leads to a more enhanced community in terms of their resilience and their sustainability to withstand any type of hazard. You'll see a, a reduction of burden or financial burden on local governments as well as taxpayers. It breaks the cycle of repetitive disaster damages, so the communities that experience the same damage over and over again. These strategies are really intended to either avoid, reduce, or eliminate the risk, or ultimately to accept it, like we've seen in some communities that have had to retreat away from where they once stood. And I think the main, the main thing that we're trying to instill here in our communities is the long-term risk aversion and mitigation, not just in, you know, our plan and immediate emergency response, but in just about everything that we do and every plan that we touch and every program that we do is looking at the risk and how we can reduce its impact on our communities. And also, not least important, but certainly not the most important part, is that an eligible hazard mitigation plan qualifies not just the city, but the county for pre and post-federal disaster mitigation funding. So you'll see after these fires that we just had, you'll see a lot of federal funding coming out for a hazard mitigation plan. And the county and the cities are prioritized in their projects. So this plan not only allows us to be eligible, but it gives us ground to stand on when we submit applications to FEMA to implement projects. The current plan covers the hazards that you'll see on the screen. For people calling in, they'll list them. Agricultural emergencies, climate change, sea level rise, coastal erosion, dam failure, drought, earthquake, floods, and coastal storms, hazardous materials events, landslide tsunamis, wildland fires, and winter storms. We did a series of public outreach events back in January 2020 before COVID happened, which was very fortuitous for this planning effort. And one of the most, I guess, vocal request from each of the meetings was that we expand this list and the hazard profile in the plan to include man-made hazards such as terrorism, active shooter events, cyber attacks, et cetera. So you will likely see that change in the next plan, or I guess this coming plan. All right, so I'm going to cover briefly some of the main hazards that the city of Monterey will likely experience. Obviously, earthquake, everyone is very much aware of that. There are some areas that in the city of Monterey that have moderate to high seismic shaking potential, essentially. There is a moderate or low to moderate risk for landslides as a result of earthquakes. Obviously, some areas of downtown Monterey are, have a higher risk for tsunamis as a result of earthquakes as well, though I will say that the risk is significantly lower than areas like Carmel by the Sea. There are some areas that may experience moderate to high risk for wildland fires. I don't think that one's a surprise to anyone in the city. And then coastal erosion. The city of Monterey has a fairly high annual erosion rate. And so those are our jumping off points for the city of Monterey with the inclusion of those additional hazards that I had mentioned. So once we identify the hazards and the risk that it poses to the community, our next step is to look at the strategies that we can implement for reducing the impact that hazard might have. And so our ultimate goals for developing mitigation strategies are to generally create a disaster-resistant whole community. And that's not just the majority, that's everyone from our minority populations to our underserved populations, to our wealthy, low-income. Everyone is considered in our whole community disaster-resistant strategy. We're ultimately, ultimately looking at protecting critical infrastructure and key resources. So the things that we need to become resilient or even to respond to a disaster are the things that need to be protected. Examples of this would be hospitals or repeaters or fire station bays or roadway. And then from there, encouraging natural systems protection, provide regulatory tools. Some areas in Monterey County have requested a reduction of regulatory tools. So we'll see how that goes. And then ultimately increasing or integrating the hazard mitigation principles into daily practices. So not just this one time in this one plan, and then we'll touch it again in five years. But ultimately, this plan is intended to inform daily practices and strategies in risk reduction. And hopefully, we'll end up educating the public and increasing their awareness, not just in the hazards around them, but in how they prepare their homes and families, resulting in a culture of resiliency. There are two types of mitigation activities that you'll likely see in the plan. And they are titled, or they are organized as plans and outreach. So local plans and regulations that can be implemented, any type of education or awareness programs. An example of that would be like the CERT teams. And then the, the ones that end up costing the most, but are very effective, are the structure and infrastructure projects like seismically retrofitting a building or a bridge and natural systems protection. The, actually, before I move on, the city of Monterey, just like every other city, will have an appendix in the back of the plan that is Monterey, or city of Monterey specific. So it will have a risk assessment of the city of Monterey, a capability assessment, and then projects specific to the city of Monterey. So it won't be a generic county plan where it's all focused on the unincorporated area. The appendix is really intended for the city of Monterey to take ownership of its projects that they want to see happen in their community, not just in the next five years, but in the next 10, 20, 50, 100 years. It's really very much a legacy document. Our current work plan is a little delayed. I was hoping to have a draft out of this plan by now. So we are rushing this a little bit over the fall and winter timeframe with the intent to still put it out for public review, for a 30-day review starting January 1st, at which point it will be submitted to CALOES for review. We receive, will likely receive back their approval pending adoption, at which point the county and all the cities and special districts will have to formally adopt the plan. And then once everyone has adopted it, they have exactly one year. FEMA will approve the plan with the intent to close out in 2023, just enough time to not think about it for a year and then start the planning process all over again. There are several ways for the public to be engaged and participate in this planning process. They're very much encouraged. All this planning is really intended to protect them. And so we encourage them to take ownership of their own safety and provide their comments, submit recommendations. And so they can view the website, they can participate in the public survey, which is both in English and Spanish. They can participate in public meetings such as this one. They're highly encouraged to download the plan, review it, and submit comments directly to our office. And then, yeah, I have already mentioned this, but participating in presentations to governing bodies where there's a formal documentation of their comments. presentations to governing bodies where there's a formal documentation of their comments. That was a very succinct and pithy version of the 30-page slide that I had originally sent. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Well, for that, we can only express our heartfelt gratitude. Because as you know, this is your opportunity to share with the city council, our staff, and also the Monterey public about what's going on, the required update to the hazard plan. So council questions at this point, comments? I can only see Kelsey and me on the screen right now, so I don't know if others want to.
No questions for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go, okay. Let me see if I can get a... There we go. Any other, anybody else at this point?
No questions.
Now, were there any public comments?
We do have one public comment, and it's from Lorna Mopit. So, hi, hi, Lorna, welcome back.
Yes, thank you. That's a great plan. I'm wondering what areas are subject to the most earthquake damage in Monterey? Hello?
Yep, okay. And is that, we have you on a timer, so are there other, anything else you'd like to say?
I'm just doing so that, you know, people can avoid those areas.
Yeah, Lorna, if you have any other questions, just ask all your questions at once, and then we'll get them answered for you, okay?
Yeah, that's the only question. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Lorna.
Thank you.
We'll hold off and hold the answer to that until, unless we have other comment.
It doesn't look like we have any other public comments on this item.
Okay, so perhaps we could get an answer to Lorna's question, please. And I think she's asking, are parts of Monterey more earthquake-prone than others?
So unfortunately, all of California is earthquake-prone. But the downtown Monterey area has generally a moderate risk for seismic shaking, whereas the higher areas are located on David Avenue as well as up in, I only know the local term for it, I don't know the like official name for the community, but Spaghetti Hill, essentially.
Old Town.
Yeah. And Del Monte Forest, Moonrise Avenue area. Or if, I'm not, Lorna, I'm not sure if you can see the screen, but it's highlighted in this reddish rust color. But there is interactive map on our website, so you can zoom in to your address to see where your home is at, or where your business, or your grocery store, or your walking club likes to go, I'm not sure. But yeah, you can zoom in, not just to the city of Monterey, but to the surrounding areas as well.
Good, good answer. Not too far along ago, we had a presentation about sea level rise, climate change, and that has to be a new element as part of the coastal local plan now from the Coastal Commission. So do you do you work with the Coastal Commission at all, or do you have access to that report that we received?
I have not seen that report, but we do work with the Coastal Commission to ensure that their data and interpretation of coastal erosion and climate change is consistent and mutually supportive in this plan. So you wouldn't necessarily see two different erosion rates, which we've actually come to find is a consistent trend across the county and California in general. So we work closely with them. And then, any mitigation strategies that you identify in your local coastal plan should be implemented in the hazard mitigation plan as well. So if there's something in particular that you would like to see, this is certainly the opportunity to support it with funding.
Well, that's good. I think another area I hear from our residents, and that's fire. So I know Chief Gaudens has been working with Cal Fire Pebble Beach Corporation, along with the Skyline Forest Neighborhood Association on developing a plan, because I'm glad that the county is willing to take this on, because it's obviously regional. Our trees don't stop at the border, they certainly spread throughout the peninsula. So I'm thinking going forward that if funds are available for fuel reduction and for identifying, identifying areas of fire concern. So I see our fire chief again, he might be able to update us on that. So I know there's a lot of appreciation out there. A big part of the Neighborhood and Community Improvement Program every year does go towards fuel reduction. And even though we had to sequester some of those funds during this economic pandemic and catastrophe, we have been able to continue to fund fuel reduction for... So Gaudens, maybe a brief update on those joint efforts that you've led?
Yes, so we've been working, like you said, very closely with the Skyline Neighborhood Association, and then getting Cal Fire Pebble Beach Community Services District involved as well to do a lot of fuel mitigation work on our joint border area up in the Skyline Forest. And in particular, this year Pebble Beach did a phenomenal job in cleaning up the piece that's just outside of the city limits that borders our Skyline neighborhood up there. And I know the residents have taken very positively to that. We did put in for a grant from the state Fire Safe Council of California, and unfortunately, just found out last week that we did not get that grant. And that was with the intention of developing a community wildfire protection plan. But that doesn't mean the plan is dead, it just means that we got to figure out another way to pay the bill on that. But we're working on that.
And to that point, the hazard mitigation plan certainly supports that. So if you're not finding funding through other mitigation funding sources, having projects listed in the hazard mitigation plans such as this one will support us, especially as we're coming into post-fire recovery and the federal funding will become available. Public assistance mitigation strategies in the impacted jurisdictions for which the city of Monterey falls into ours, as the county, are prioritized for projects related to the disaster that they just experienced. So those projects would certainly qualify.
That's good, because we know it's one thing to have a plan, but it's the implementation that's very important. Councilmember Allen, please.
Chief Gaudens, question for you. So the fires this year obviously came very close to home for many of us. It's certainly not impossible to imagine Monterey having been threatened in the way that Carmel Valley or, you know, the Highlands and Salinas were threatened. My question to you is, you know, could we, are there things we could do with our tree trimming ordinance that might allow us to make our homes more defensible and still at the same time ensure that we continue to be a tree city, a tree-loving city? And so, yeah, is there something we can do there?
At this point, I think that our tree trimming ordinance is fairly robust in that it allows for our city forester to make a determination. And we work very closely together, Justin Proudie and I, on issues related to fire safety. And so usually, if there's a fire safety concern related to a tree trimming, it's not going to be an issue to prevent that from happening. I know that in the past, there were some concerns, especially from some of the neighborhoods up in the Skyline area, that we were overly restrictive and didn't allow tree trimming. But that's, we've got a very good approach, I believe, at this point.
Is there anything else that we could do that we're not doing that could make the city better prepared for the threat of forest fire?
Well, that's a fairly loaded question. We do, so in the interest of keeping it short, because I know there's a few other things on the agenda for you tonight, that's one of the reasons why we want to develop the wildfire protection plan, because that kind of is an overarching view of where are the challenges in the city and what are the actions that we need to take. I think one of the great things that we are doing currently is we have a very sizable amount of money remaining in the budget to do fuels mitigation, because that's really the biggest thing that contributes to our threat. We can't, we as Monterey alone are not going to fix climate change issues and some of those, you know, existential, larger situations that create the risk. But what we can do is work locally on our fuel mitigations. And we've also really implemented a very robust program in the fire department of doing inspections of every parcel in all the jurisdictions we serve and working with homeowners to ensure that they do proper clearing and defensible space. So I think we're on the right track. But as with everything, this stuff doesn't come for free. And I know that Justin is spending, Justin Proudie, our city forester, is spending money very judiciously to get the best bang for our buck on that front.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate what you're doing to keep all of us safe, you and all the fire engineers.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments before we let Kelsey go? All right, Kelsey, thank you. We look forward to continue working with you. We look forward to implementation. We look forward to some money coming Monterey's way.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, thank you. And that's something obviously on everybody's mind these days. All right, that was excellent. So the next item is to adopt a resolution. Item 15, declaring the council's commitment and the city's commitment citywide and support to achieve racial equity and to promote diversity and inclusion, and consider supporting Proposition 16. The recommendation is that city council adopt a resolution declaring the council's commitment and support to achieve racial equity and to promote diversity and inclusion. And so committing and supporting efforts to achieve racial equity and promoting diversity and inclusion is consistent with the city council value drivers to maintain and expand an environment that solicits, welcomes, and appreciates input from all towards working to improve the quality of life of our residents. So I'll turn it over to Hans Usler, our city manager. And in his report, he has three bullet points that really highlight what our resolution is doing and reinforcing the values of the city of Monterey, an open, inclusionary city. So with that, Hans, I'll turn it to you, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The resolution in front of you represents more or less a starting point of an official city conversation among all various stakeholders here in the city and between council, between staff, between stakeholders, groups, interest groups, other groups, to start a conversation about diversity, start a conversation about social justice, start a conversation about racism. And we felt, after listening to councilmembers Ellen Hafar, as well as Tyler and others, that the good starting point is to propose a diversity resolution. And this diversity resolution by no means assumes that it is complete. By no means it assumes that this is the endpoint. It is just the very, very, very first starting point of having a conversation among all the various groups, touching all topics that range from how we are dealing with, within the city of Monterey, with our own history here on the peninsula. How are we coping with that? How are we adjusting our interpretation of history? But also, how are we ensuring that Black Lives Matter? How are we ensuring that our community and our hiring practices is representative of the diversity of our community? Tonight, the council appointed folks to boards and commissions. So it will reach out also, how are we ensuring that everyone of our community feels to be heard? More importantly also, is being respected by those in power? And let's not talk, let's be straight about that. Police is part of that narrative, is part of the conversation we have to have. And I did not prepare a presentation for that, because frankly, this is an opportunity for all of you to talk and to listen and listen to each other, and also provide us with some questions, or maybe even also provide us with feedback, what are the various steps we can go to? I can envision three for different directions we have to parallel work on those issues. For instance, as your CEO, as the head of this organization, what are we doing with our staff, or how are we ensuring internally that a lot of the things and practices are respectful, that we are diverse, that we are sensitive, that we have sensitivity training, et cetera? How are we dealing internally with that? So the resolution focuses on three elements, and again, I cannot emphasize it enough. This is just the starting point for that new conversation we have to enter in. And I used a different, I used a different word the other day in something I wrote for a city focus. But many, many times, we have aspired to be a fair society. Many times, we have aspirations to get to a certain point. Well, I think now is the time to fill those aspirations with actual practices, with actual life, and provide guidance to every single one, to transform aspirations into actual practices. And so this resolution that is in front of you would denounce the actions and inactions of those police officers which resulted in the loss of so many Black lives, and resolve to do our part to ensure that this never happens in our city, never happens in the city of Monterey. It would direct me and the chief of police to return to you at the end of 2020 with a presentation to tell you how the city of Monterey, how the police department uses fair and impartial policing policies. And at that time, we can have a discussion about those with you. And also, it directs me as your city manager to develop with our staff and present to you the council a comprehensive plan that incorporates policies, procedures, and priorities that address racial equity, inclusivity, equity, and diversity among the cities, the city's board, and commission. And so these are the three key elements of the resolution. And with that, I also, we also added a consideration of additionally considering maybe to look into Proposition 16. And again, this is up to the pleasure of the council. Unfortunately, councilmember Smith is not here, so you don't hear probably all the various aspects of that. And that might be not the opportune time tonight to talk about Proposition 16. But I wanted to leave it with that. The three elements of our resolutions are presented. And with that, I hand it to you, the elected officials, and guide us, help us figure it out. And also, again, I cannot overemphasize this, this is just the starting point. By no means does our resolution probably, we are not incorporating even 60% of what we should incorporate. But it's our best effort to present it to you.
Yeah, thank you so much. There's a point where we have to start with formal resolution, a foundation, so to speak. Just not unlike what we just did, where we were looking at a plan, a hazards mitigation plan. We certainly want to have a plan, but the key is implementation. Any questions from staff before we go to the public? This would be a time for questions. Okay, saying none, I would ask now, do we have any public comment?
We do have one public comment so far, and the comment will be from Lorna Mopit.
Well, we welcome Lorna back again.
Yes, I'd like to just tell you a little story very quickly of the, I attended an Esalen Indian campfire once, and in their religion, they believe that no race will go to heaven as long as there is racial discrimination. And they said that the black race was the heart race, and they would teach their gift to the other races was love. And that the white race, their gift to the other races was mind. And the yellow race was how to heal the body and the mind. Thus, we have Tai Chi and yoga and all that. And the red race was the gift, their gift to us was how to heal the earth. And until each race is able to give its gift to the other races, none of us, none of the doors of heaven open to any of us. Thank you for allowing this comment.
Thank you, Lorna. Uh, I don't see any other public comment.
All right, then we'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. We do have a resolution on the table. Council member Alan, would you start us off, please?
Yeah, I want to thank staff for bringing this really thoughtful and well-written resolution. Um, I also want to say that I really, um, appreciate our police chief. I appreciate our police department. I think it was, I think there's a lot of attention on police in the United States and for, for good reason. But I believe the Monterey Police Department is policing in a way that puts the rights of all of our citizens first. That being said, you know, in education, and I think Dan and Mayor Clyde know this as well, we're always about self-improvement. What can we do better? And I know the police department is too. So I look forward to hearing what we are doing and all of the chief's ideas and what we can do better in the future. Um, I also think it's really important that as we look at the issue of racial discrimination in our country and in our city, it's not just about police. It's about every aspect of society. And, um, education, city services, everything that we do. We really, we have a history of systematic discrimination that we need to address as a people in order to make things right. And so I'm just so appreciative of our staff, of our managers, and of our city for taking this issue seriously. And this is a first step. This is going to center us and help make the issue of equity be central to what we do moving forward. Um, when Tyler and I hosted our, our, um, forum on the topic, uh, Mel Mason, who's a civil rights activist and, um, educator, um, and social worker, spoke about how he felt that coming to Monterey was like crossing, maybe Tyler can speak to this too. It was like crossing some kind of a barrier. And he didn't feel welcome here. And that made me feel really sad because he's a good person. And everyone, we want everyone to feel welcome when they come to Monterey, and we're going to do that. And, uh, thank you, staff, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Alan. Anyone else? Council member Dan, please.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, obviously these are, these are very tough times, and I, I appreciate, uh, both Alan and, um, and Tyler bringing this, uh, subject up. And, uh, and I'm also very proud of the city for not overlooking the change that's happening in our, in our state, in our city, and in our nation. Um, I, I support in implementing policies that the better serve under, under representative portions of our cities. And, and also I think the staff is right. Um, it's a, it's a right course of action to start by evaluating, self-evaluating our own policies and dealing with ordinances and budgets and policies and practices that help our underserved. Um, and I feel very confident with this council that we can discuss this, uh, this highly political, politically charged subject. And, and I hope it's my expectation that we all listen and we respect each other's opinion. And, and we deal what's what best and, and the decisions that are what's best for the city of Monterey. Uh, I, I do have a request that, uh, when we do start, uh, these discussions, uh, before we get to policy decisions, that, that we, uh, that we use our monthly study sessions, uh, to, to discuss these items instead of, uh, during our regular business, uh, meetings. Because then we have a, a lot more time to discuss it, and we have a lot more time to, um, to, to really get, get into the meat of what's going on and then bring the policies back, um, that, that we discuss. And this is a great, uh, example of, uh, what, what you can put on a yearly calendar and which we got from staff, uh, like last week. And so we can time, we can do a timetable or timeline and, and getting this done, uh, within the year. So thanks again, staff, and, and again, thanks again, Alan and Tyler for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Very good. Council member Tyler, please.
Um, I have a, a lot of thoughts and feelings on my mind in regards to this subject. Um, I think most notably, being the only person of color on, on the council. Um, and the weight of that is, is really heavy. Um, a, a lot of people in the community look to me to solve the problems in regards to diversity and inclusion. And I don't necessarily have all the answers, and, and I know that I still have a lot to learn myself. Um, and I have areas that I can grow personally. And I think that's a big piece about this conversation and is that none of us are perfect. Um, we, we all have room to grow and learn about one another and, and be respectful and mindful of people's background. Um, and treat people equitably. So what, again, lots of, uh, thoughts and feelings weighing on me right now. Um, I, I, I do appreciate and respect staff, um, particularly so under Hans's leadership, um, for embracing this topic and the willingness to partner with the council and engaging in this dialogue. Um, uh, also a lot of appreciation for our police chief. Um, I've had nothing but a respectful relationship with, uh, Dave Hoag since I've joined, uh, the city council. And I appreciate him from the moment that he introduced himself to me. So, um, a lot of respect for our city staff. I think we have amongst the most professional staff that, um, I've seen in, in municipal government. And so just a lot of appreciation. So I just want to start off on, um, on appreciating and recognizing, um, I think how far we already are. And this conversation is just trying to figure out how do we continue that dialogue as we move forward so that we can do that incremental growth together. Um, uh, part of my feeling when I looked at the resolution was that I, I didn't feel like it matched what I was thinking in my head necessarily. Um, what, what I was thinking was a, a document that would be a foundation. And so part, part of my thought is, and, and just kind of follow me here, but part of my thought is maybe we, we, we approve this tonight. But this wasn't what I was thinking as far as, um, what I was looking for i- in the context of, I was hoping that we could have data and, um, details that reflect the city of Monterey, like the history of Monterey, um, with the Native Americans and recognizing the fact that we have, um, low-wage workers that drive the hospitality industry that drive our economy in the city of Monterey, right? Having that stuff re- being reflected in the resolution, um, was kind of some of the things that I was looking for. And I have, I have a long, a long list that I may look through here in a second, um, to, to, to point out stuff. But part of my thought was, yes, it's great that we brought something forward. Um, but I was hoping that we could have community dialogues and get input from, um, folks in the public around what our resolution looks like. Because my thought is, is that we take this resolution and it drives, right? Alan, I think you were kind of alluding to this. It drives everywhere else that we're going. But what I see in the resolution is that this is more driving, giving, the council giving staff direction to bring back more information to us. So I'm wondering if it would be helpful for us to kind of move forward with this action tonight. And then in December or whenever it is that staff comes back to us to present additional information and findings, we then have some community dialogues and we, we, we really look at a good diversity and inclusion, um, resolution that we use to then have a discussion about specific policies within certain areas, right? So I think one of them that came up during the discussion was the idea of maybe tasking the historical preservation commission with reflecting the history of the Native American culture um, within, uh, the city of Monterey and within the region. Um, there was also a discussion around policing and what that looks like in public safety in general. Um, so there's a lot of elements that I, I feel like, um, we should be really attaching to this document so that it really drives the direction that we take with policy and decision-making moving forward. So I'm not really sure how I feel at this point. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I want to be open and hear from my colleagues about what we should do tonight. But part of me feels like this is a good start, but maybe table it. Or, or maybe we say that this resolution is specifically for giving staff direction to, to do this further, you know, research and study and then come back and present to us so that we can then come up with, uh, with the diversity and resolution, um, diversity and inclusion resolution. So I, I guess I'll stop there and I'm interested in hearing some.
Hey, Alan, please.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand how you're feeling, and I actually can understand completely how you're feeling, but I understand what you're saying. And I would just offer this, that, um, I, I think that we are going to be having a conversation both about our HR practices, about all of our city operations and about our policing. And those are all specific, specific directions in the therefore clauses of the resolution. So I think honestly, that's really huge. That those are big, big, big changes. And, um, I do agree, I think the history element is also important and, and that there are other elements that are important, but I think passing this resolution tonight is really important, and I don't think delaying it or tabling it would be a good thing. We can always, in the future, as other aspects of this issue come to light or, um, you know, become prominent, we can always bring them up. But I think moving forward in the way that the resolution directs is a really pos- my view, it's a really positive step. I would just say I heard from Mel, I, I wrote Mel Mason. I was hoping he'd be able to join us and participate tonight. He obviously wasn't. He was very supportive of the resolution, so I just offer that.
Okay, good. Council member Dan?
Yeah, I do understand what you're saying, Tyler. Um, for me, this, the, what, what we start with will be a document, obviously, what, what, starting with the resolution. But I think it'll also be like a budget, a, a live document, and that it'll grow and expand. And, um, by the end this time next year, uh, we can look back at it and say, you know, we got everything that we needed to, to discuss in the document. So I, I agree with Alan that, uh, the resolution is just a beginning. And, um, and I think that as, as we move along, if it's not going the way that we would, we would prefer to go, then we have to change it. And that's, uh, that's just a part of what we do. And I don't see this as a one or two uh, meeting discussion. You know, this is, as Alan says, it's a, it's a huge document. It's going to be ongoing for quite a few, uh, quite a few months, if not six to twelve months, uh, to come up with a, a final document. But even with a final document, I still think it's going to grow and change.
Okay, so if, if, if maybe you, you all entertain me, and, and I'll try to filter out some of the things that I, I feel like could be saved for a later discussion. But I kind of just want to go through my list and see if there are some things that we can find that are appropriate to include this. Um, so let me just go ahead and get started. Um, one thing in particular, particularly because it, it's something that we've already identified as a priority in the city. Um, I, I think it's important, or I think it's a missed opportunity to not include something in there about housing um, and how the, a lack of affordability, um, for the communities of color. Um, so that's one thing I'll throw out. Um, and again, I think it's important to kind of somehow reference Monterey's own history. So including something about, um, the local Native American tribes, um, the, the importance of identifying the background about the diversity driven from the low-wage workers and hospitality industry and how they drive our economy. Uh, in the resolution, it included race or color, sexual orientation, disability, gender, age. I'd also think it's important to include ethnicity, nationality, gender identity, socioeconomic status, physical and or mental capabilities, and religious beliefs. I'm gonna skip that one. See, I'm helping you guys out here. I'm gonna skip some stuff. Uh, I, I think it, it's really important to identify discrimination specifically, right? So that word hasn't even, it wasn't raised at all in, in the resolution. And so I think it's important to specifically, um, identify that. And so maybe it could be something along the lines of Monterey protects the constitutional rights of its citizens, including the right to be free of discriminatory practices and the fair application of law. And to de- uh, demonstrate that Monterey is a welcoming and inclusive city where laws apply equally to all who live here and where individuals, families, and businesses are welcome. Um, I have two points regarding policing specifically. And again, this might be something that we come back to later, once we have a presentation from the police chief. But I think it's important to look at, um, specific statistics, um, that maybe we're not already capturing, or maybe the data is there, but we're not looking at it in the way that we need to. So I give an example of what race are the individuals, and this I think came up in the call that Alan and I did with the community. What race are the individuals who people are calling on, right? So people are calling the police on individuals in our community. What race are those people that they're calling on, um, I think is helpful data to look at. Um, I'm not sure if the mayor's talking to me. No. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. Um, the other one is that I, I think it's helpful or important to include language that we are focusing on re- um, on policies that reduce the use, um, in reliance on the police department, right? So again, full respect and appreciation for the police department and what they do. But one of the things is that we're super dependent upon our police department to handle all of our social issues. So how can we start pulling back some of those things so that way we can leave the police department to do what we absolutely need them to do? Um, and not anything super specific, but I think just highlighting that I think is, is an important, um, message to our community that we really want to value the resources appropriately. Um, just an idea of, and a general idea of being reactive versus, I'm sorry, being proactive versus reactive, um, is an important element. I'm gonna skip this one. Um, I, I think another really important thing is regionality. So how are we working with our local municipalities um, throughout the region to help combat some of these issues that we're identifying, um, with racism and discriminatory issues within the region? Because most people don't realize when they're going from one community to the next. Um, I have two more bullets, so I'm almost there. And then there's, I think, an element, and again, not getting too very specifics, but, um, kind of alluding to the need to prioritize our investment into appropriate city services. Um, so how do we, how do we ident- how do we give a message to our community in the resolution that we're going to make appropriate investments recognizing the need for us to grow, um, with our diversity and inclusion? Um, you know, that's it. I'll, I'll end there. So I'm not sure if any of those are in, interest to, to the, to the three other of you, um, for, for maybe including now, or maybe we just push that off and, and bring that back later. And I'm interested.
My, here's my thoughts, Mr. Mayor, and.
Yes, please, Alan.
I mean, I think there's a lot there, and I think it's all worthy. I'm not sure we're going to be able to capture it all tonight. But I did try on a couple of those points to craft some quick languages I was listening to. So I don't know. But I could imagine, um, in the resolution, I think it goes right now on the therefor's. There's like F. So and, and FG would could be related to housing, something like the high cost of housing and lack of affordable housing. the high cost of housing and lack of affordable housing in Monterey perpetuates racial and social inequities. That's an idea. That's that would be maybe one idea I'd throw out there. And H having to do with history, direct the History and Arts Commission to reexamine our history to ensure that the diversity of peoples who contribute to our city history are equitably represented. I don't know if 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 those two would be satisfactory. This isn't always the best place to be sort of wordsmithing. So but that's the best that I could do.
Yes, uh, I might say the good additions, that's the whole point of having this resolution and discussion. That's exactly what the city manager has asked from us. So I very much appreciate what uh the council member Alan and council member Tyler are talking about and and I appreciate Tyler's points. Those are the very things that I feel this resolution will initiate, the kind of issues and discussion that you're talking about. Again, all of us, many of us working in government know how many times we made plans that sat on a shelf. We don't want a resolution that sits on a shelf either. So we do have the commitment from uh our staff to go forward and come back to us soon. Just if I may, a couple of comments. Uh, as you know, during the the George Floyd crisis, we got a lot of emails about eight can't wait, et cetera. And because of that, I I thought it was a good opportunity to learn, and I see going forward that this is a learning opportunity too. We need to know what we as a staff and a city are doing right now. For example, um, it was my honor to sign as the mayor the Obama Use of Force Project. And I've attended some of those online Zoom meetings from all over the country, which is, and many people are having the same conversation we are. As it turns out, uh, if you, anyone listening, take a look at our website and look at our Monterey Police Department website and you will find a really excellently written protocols and practices, because our police department's been part of the Obama project. I think it was exception four years ago. And the eight uh protocols of our use of force, our police department has been following those for eight years. So we really do have a police force that's the model of uh community policing, much appreciated out there. So I think it's good to know what are we doing? I'm not saying, yay, we're good, we don't have to do anything else, but I think that's part of the whole discussion is what are our hiring practices? Let's get ourselves informed. Then uh secondly, uh during this last appointment cycle and throughout the appointment cycles, one of the part of my uh recommendations to you, and of course, you always have the veto power and a chance to decide which uh people you want on your commissions, I was I was thinking about gender and race and social and nationality equity, along with qualifications. And I I think if you look at our boards and commissions, we're we're getting a a nice diverse representation of our city. And then as an elementary school teacher, and I know we have a high school secondary teacher and administrator, and we also have um an MPC professor, and all of us have had the opportunity to work with young people. And I've shared this with you before, and it it still resonates with me when even during our COVID graduations, that we had an opportunity to 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 see some distant COVID graduations. And how many times have we heard about students told that the world is theirs, that all they have to do is work hard and they can achieve anything they want? And and that's a very nice sentiment, but frankly, it's not true. And that's why this resolution and the city going forward, we have to fulfill the promise that we were giving our young people and our older people. We want to make sure that everyone has economic, legal, housing, educational health and environmental equality. We know, uh, just looking at uh the COVID, how it's hit people of color and essential workers and people of less means harder. And that's simply not right. So when we we continue talking, we do need to talk about economic and legal and housing and education and health and environmentally quality. We also know that a lot of of people on the poverty level live in areas that are more environmentally damaged. And so these are things that we which we should discuss as a city. So that promise that we give to our young people at graduation is a real promise and it it results in some action. So I'm I'm comfortable with going ahead with the resolution, adding the the wording that Alan suggested. And I look forward to coming back and and having further discussions, so.
So I'll I'll make that motion if if it's okay then, that we approve the resolution adding um under the therefore is a G and an H. And I did send the language to Clementine and Nat and Chrissy. And if there's really anything concerning, please speak up or Tyler or Dan or Clyde if you want to change it, but the G was the high, and I'm trying to address, I couldn't get everything that you were concerned about Tyler, but I tried to do what I could. The high cost of housing and lack of affordable housing perpetuates racial and social inequities. And uh H directs the his, is it the History and Arts Commission? I always get the name wrong, Clyde.
It's the uh the Museum of Cultural Arts.
Okay, thank you. The Museum and Cultural Arts Commission to reexamine our history to ensure that the diversity of peoples who contribute contributed to our city history are represented.
Okay, we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor, I'll I'll second it, but do we have to take it out to a public comment first before we make?
Uh, we had public comment already. And Lorna was the only one who had.
Oh, that's right. That's her. Where the heck was I? Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay. For a final comments before we move on it, uh Tyler?
Yeah, so um Alan, I appreciate you capturing um what you could and and adding that. Um, I I don't want to wordsmith it. I agree with you that this isn't the place to do it. I do see today being more a space for us to give staff direction to come back to us in December as indicated in the resolution. So I look forward to that. Um, I just hope at that time or soon thereafter, um that we as a council can um uh create a new resolution that um that is based on some of the data and information that we've received. Um, and and hopefully, um we can work with city staff to do some maybe wordsmithing in the background, uh you know, perhaps you, Alan and myself can work with Hans on that before we get to a council meeting so that we're not trying to figure out how to incorporate those things once we um get to a council meeting. And then the last thing I'll bring up is um that I appreciate staff bringing up Prop sixteen. Is that something that we're trying to include in tonight's discussion?
So I'm speaking.
I would just.
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
No, I I was just gonna say, I the only thing I'm thinking is if we're gonna do it, that tonight's probably the night to do it, because people are already filling out their ballots. I mean, I imagine that we all recognize that people are probably going to be filling out their ballots sooner this year than any other previous election, just because of all the issues given um with with mail-in ballots this year, so.
I mean, speaking for myself, I feel like we should focus on what we can do to make Monterey the most inclusive and welcoming place it can be. I don't think, you know, if Prop sixteen passes, that will be a new reality. We will adjust to that. If it doesn't pass, I don't think that prohibits us from doing what needs to be done. I I just think we should let the voters decide. Probably half of them have already voted right now already. And I I don't think that it's a good idea for us to get into the middle of a ballot measure. That's just my view.
Now, I I'd like to uh I like to throw some some uh comments in on that one. I I I understand and and uh what you're what you're saying Tyler, but but also that opens the door to other ballot measures and other people asking us to to either support or not support uh ballot measures. And and I think that's kind of a slippery slope for the city uh to go down. Um, even though um, but I'm sure that it it's well supported in in our city and also in the state. I think it's it can get a little uh little dangerous going down that road, I think.
Yeah, just for your information, uh, I I was on a John Laird Zoom and who gave a statistic that was just reinforced by a demographer at uh the Regional League of Cities meeting. Fifty-seven percent of the people were projected to have voted last weekend as soon as they got their ballots. And then another twenty percent on top of that will have voted by this Friday. That's seventy-seven percent of the electorate are anticipated to have voted. Then finally, only twelve percent will vote on Election Day. And I thought that was uh absolutely fascinating, uh statistic corroborated from two really good sources. So we do, uh, I think I'm hearing we have a resolution and a second and excellent discussion. Did the city attorney want to weigh in or no?
I I might have one suggestion if you'd indulge me. I think maybe it should go to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Sure, makes sense. I I would agree to that amendment if I I can't remember who seconded it, but.
Dan, I seconded the motion, yeah. Is that fine? Yes. Yeah, okay, good. All right. Roll call, please. And again, this is just the beginning, folks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa.
Yes.
Mayor Roberson.
Yes, for me as well. As always, I really enjoy and learn a lot from you all. Thank you so much, colleagues.
Thank you again, colleagues and uh and city staff for for your work on this. I really appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, city manager update on COVID nineteen response efforts. All right, well, we'll go to Still Alert. City Manager Hans Oslar.
Yeah, I'll I'll try to to share my screen here with you. I hope that works.
I practiced earlier today and and it was it was fairly easy. I can share children's poems with you. If you get bored, you all.
So I hope this worked, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're looking good.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, this is um as always, uh, a COVID nineteen update. Um, October sixth, twenty twenty, two hundred five days since we declared a local emergency. Uh, I will talk about the county, the city numbers. I give you a brief overview over our operations in the sports center and the library, sports center, recreation centers and the conference center. I'll give you a rental assistance program update, and then I hope um that you have some questions. Uh, and I I even hope more that I know the answers to them. Um, this is the case today. Um, thirty-one new cases. Uh, the numbers uh are now always in the lower of the uh in the lower end of between thirty to fifty to sixteen, uh sometimes a spike of ninety or hundred. But the cases have the caseload, uh, the positive numbers have come really down over the past three weeks here in the county of Monterey. Uh, this is how we score in the city of Monterey. Uh, we have about one point two one percent of all infected cases. Um, hundred twenty-six folks were infected in Monterey, ninety-nine have recovered. That means at the present time, we have twenty-seven active COVID cases in the city of Monterey. Um, this is the positivity rate for the county of Monterey right now. Uh, it's uh five point four percent. Uh, and the uh uh new cases per day, per hundred thousand is eleven point two. The adjusted rate is ten point oh. And when you look uh on the right-hand side, I I gave you the uh the various categories, uh widespread, that's the purple area in which we are. Um, and it tells you that that we are working towards the substantial category. Um, there are some more conditions uh in 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 that that were published last week uh by the California Department of Public Health. It's called Equity Focus. Um, and also tonight, uh, the the Monterey County Weekly published a very good uh summary of of the Equity Focus and what is intended with that in their daily uh email update that the Monterey County Weekly sends out under Monterey now. Um, and it's 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 uh it basically focuses on um uh creating equity of the numbers of the infection rates among all zip codes. So if you take a good look at our data in the county of Monterey, you will see that we have hotspots in in the area of Salinas, in the area of South County. Um, we have a hotspot uh a little bit uh here in 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 Seaside to a degree, if you if you uh look uh uh at at the numbers. But what what the Equity Focus means in all of that is that um all zip codes need to be treated equally. And when you look at statistics, it needs to ensure that all zip codes are uh falling into the next level of of category substantial, moderate or minimal. You cannot afford uh under the Equity Focus guidance from the California Department of Health that you have certain areas that are still outliers with respect to infection rates. And we we just talked ten minutes ago, five minutes ago about equity. Um, uh, and again, there there you've, there you have it. Equity focused by the California Department of Public Health also with respect to to COVID nineteen. Uh, and with that, the county is tasked to um come up with measures to work with the individual cities comma zip codes to bring those infection rates down. And um I understand that today Dr. Moreno briefed the Board of Supervisors during their Board of Supervisor meeting. I didn't have a chance yet to to read his presentation or see his presentation. I will I will do that to have a better understanding of uh how the council will follow, how the county, how the county will follow up with the Equity Focus. Now, the Equity Focus right now is 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 the next challenge that we jointly as a county have to tackle. Uh, the numbers on the peninsula are looking all pretty well right now to go into the next level of uh substantial, which means some non-essential indoor business operations uh are still closed, but but that means some other operations can open. But based on the Equity Focus, we need to make sure that all of us are in in uh in the same boat and all of us are treated equally. So I I'm looking forward reading what what uh Dr. Moreno briefed the Board of Supervisors today, because the county really has to come up with with some measures to to um bring down the infection rates in certain zip codes. Um, that brings me to uh an update where we are in the city of Monterey. Um, most of our facilities remain close to the public, also the library, but the library is really booming. Um, uh, that's the word the library director used with me this morning, that I should say the library is booming, especially the cloud library. Uh, people are uh using uh the through the Monterey Public Library access to the cloud library, which is basically an alliance of several libraries, uh of various libraries across the country. And you're you're able to download uh electronic electronically books and you read them for twenty-one days and then hopefully you finish your book and you can uh download the next one. However, our uh sidewalk service remains very popular. Uh, we are in day eighty-three of uh opening up the the library with respect to sidewalk service. Thirty-eight thousand items are checked out weekly, anywhere between three to six hundred customers that drive up to the library and uh pick up the books or drop off books. Um, and an interesting model that the library has, very innovative, very creative, uh is the library wishlist. Um, basically, they have a list wishlist created. Folks can order the books on amazon.com. Um, those books then will be issued to the library. Uh, the library will inventory them, basically accept the donation, and then the folks who have donated the books uh through the Amazon uh wishlist will be the first that are allowed to read those books. But in the, and then the book gets returned to the library and we can uh circulate the book as part of our collection. So very innovative, also highly successful when you consider so far seventy-five books have been donated. Sports Center uh started uh outdoor exercise classes a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they have been very successful. When you walk by the sports center now, you see actually folks with yoga mats walking in and out the um uh deck, uh the sun deck that we have next to the pool. Um, so I I congratulate our sports center right now to have something there that that seems to be very, very successful. Um, we're starting a a preschool program very, very soon. Um, that will be. Um, that will be located at Hilltop Park. We are just in the, I would say, week two of three weeks of planning on this one. But we feel that we can fill at least one program with up to eleven children on, and one instructor. And are actually hopeful that once we start that, that we can slowly maybe open a second children classroom as well for preschooling. Uh, Alastero Park Center, as you know, lots of programming there, all of them outside yesterday again. Uh, the weekly food bank produce distribution. Um, then we have daily meals on wheels programs there as well as blood drives. I believe the meals on wheels are Tuesday through Friday. Unfortunately, playgrounds, our playgrounds will remain closed in the city of Monterey. Um, there are various reasons for that. Number one is we still are in a, in county status, purple, widespread. And we have just twenty four playgrounds in the city of Monterey. And those twenty four playgrounds, we have to monitor and clean on a frequent basis. And we have, this is part of the state guidance. And we just cannot keep twenty four playgrounds throughout the city operationally safe during the COVID-19 times. Um, other cities have opened their playgrounds. Uh, they have just one or two playgrounds they have to look after. That's easier to manage, but twenty four playgrounds. And again, our thanks goes out to the NCIP, um, who helped us create many of those playgrounds. So thank you, NCIP. Of all right now, um, those playgrounds have to remain closed uh, because we just simply cannot service them, maintain them in the way that is required to have a safe environment for children to play during COVID-19 uh, in the city of Monterey. Dennis the Menace Playground, I don't have to talk about it too long. You all know what's going on there, Saturdays and Sundays and on holidays. Uh, this is a regional playground with six, eight hundred, a thousand kids and families attending. Social distancing will be a real challenge to create Dennis the Menace. So again, part of the playground system, it remains closed. And with that, I go to the Conference Center. Conference Center has closed again after a couple, after three or four weeks of operation as an emergency shelter, as a FEMA center. Uh, Conference Center is closed again. However, um, there are some nice news out there. Tet Monterey will go back to their roots, as they call it, June 2021. Uh, they will come back to Monterey and it's called Tet Monterey, the Case for Optimism. Uh, tickets are available online. If you want to attend all four days in Monterey, it just costs you $12,000. Uh, September bookings, um, we have, we were able to book five bookings in September. They are for next year and out years that translate to seventy, eight hundred sixty room nights. Uh, we were able to rebook an event that was scheduled to be here in September. They have agreed to come back next year in September. And also we have uh, five prospective groups that we are working with for future use. Uh, again, fifty eight hundred twenty nine room nights. So if you look at the translation of that, the fifty eight hundred twenty nine room nights have an impact of one point three million dollars in overnight charges. If you take the seven thousand eight hundred sixty room nights, that translates to about one point eight million dollars in dollars for our economy. So it's important that we keep continuing booking. And we are very, very hopeful that sometime in 2021, we are reopening this beautiful center that is now unfortunately completely closed. But a highlight definitely is Tet Monterey, June 2021. We are glad they're coming back to Monterey where Tet actually started. Um, this is important also for us to point out. We have an official ballot drop box. Uh, it's next to our library. Um, it's serviced by the County Election Office. And what is, why is that important? Your ballot, when you drop it off next to the ballot, when you drop it off at the official ballot drop box, goes directly to the Monterey County of Elections. And that doesn't go into the mail system. So this is a great way of um, ensuring that your ballot gets to the right place in the shortest amount of times. It gets serviced on a regular basis by the County Election Office. They're coming by and emptying it regularly. So if you want to avoid the, all the dilemma that we heard on the national news with respect to the postal service, here's a good way of ensuring that your ballot gets to the right place in the right time. Um, here are some numbers that I want to share with you. TOT numbers in the times of COVID. Uh, you see here, our numbers for July and August are in. And we are about sixty three point five percent below where we were a year ago. Now, the good news is we are tracking as our model predicted. And actually, we are slightly more positive as our model was predicting it by about, I think, $12,000 or $15,000. Um, I can share with you that over the last weekend, um, we had some, I have some anecdotal data from some hotels that actually had some very strong overnight numbers over the weekend, as well as interesting numbers with respect to the average daily room rate. So it appears to me that the room rates are ticking slowly up. And also that still the weekends, even though we are in the post seasons, are still looking strong for us. Here's something you always wanted to know, Emergency Rental Assistance Program update. We are making a positive impact on our community. Uh, so far, we have spent about around $166,000. Forty three renters have been helped. We still have $633,000 left. Um, $129,000 are pending right now, um, that we want to submit. And when you look here at the distribution place of residents, seventy four percent so far are distributed living in Monterey, eleven percent in Marina, seven percent in Pacific Grove, Seaside, four percent, Carmel, two percent, and Pebble Beach, two percent. Um, now, don't get too much carried away when you, it's just the basis of these are forty three issue checks so far. With the number behind Carmel and Pebble Beach is actually only one residential assistance for each of those entities. Um, but again, this program works. Uh, our staff is very busy to help everyone to document the, to submit the documents on time. Uh, we are calling them, we are emailing them, and we're keeping basically our offer alive to help them to shepherd on the process to the success, which is for us, sending a check ultimately to their respective landlords. Um, the finance team, the finance department also deserves a shout out. Um, they went from uh, twice a month issuing checks now to a weekly check run. And by Wednesday, I think we are submitting the names. And on Friday, the checks are placed in the mail. And with that, um, I conclude my COVID-19 update and I hope you have questions for me.
All right, thank you, Hans. Always very complete as usual. A lot going on. Council questions? Councilmember Dan, please.
Thank you, Hans. I have a couple of questions. Uh, one, just for people out there. Um, is there other ballot drop boxes besides the one in the library in the city of Monterey? Or is there anywhere else or just the library?
We just have it in the city of Monterey. Uh, the next one is at Embassy Suites in Seaside. Um, I recommend that the, those folks who are interested in that go on to the Monterey County Weekly. They have an excellent interactive map. Uh, there's one also in PG, there's one in Carmel. Um, so it's not like Texas here where we have one per county.
Okay, thank you, Hans.
I had to say it, I'm sorry.
That was a good one, Hans, thank you.
It was. I just have one more question, Alan. So I'm very surprised with the amount of renters we have in the city of Monterey, that we have ninety six that have applied for a rental assistance program. Is there a reason why it's not higher than ninety six? Have you heard anything about that? I'm just surprised, that's all.
Um, no, I have not heard why it's not higher. Uh, we are, we have contacted numerous times, various outfits. Um, it also has received a lot of coverage through, so if I say various outfits, we're working very closely with the Aquarium to spread the word. We're working very closely with MCHA to spread the word. We have done media releases, uh, we update the media, I think, every two weeks, Thursday, when we talk about that program. Um, Weekly has reported KIONKSW. Um, what happened also is that some of the applications were taken back because they worked things out with the landlord. Um, there were also things where folks had applied and then came back and said, well, we are employed and it's okay with us right now. And we also had some that dropped off of the radar. We don't know what happened to them. Um, but we will continue to advertise it and will continue to speak about this because we want to be successful. And last but not least, there's a little challenge also. We need to spend the money because HUD has the timeliness factor that we have to spend the money in an appropriate way. And so, otherwise, they take the money back and we cannot spend it. So we keep pushing and notifying everyone. And Councilmember Williamson suggested last week that we put this Tenant Protection Act on the website. So we put that presentation on the website there as well. But I really hope spreading the word, more people will come and utilize the program.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Alan, please.
Yeah, I just, again, wanted to commend staff for implementing the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And I think that it's forty three families right now. I'm sure it'll be more. But those are families that we are keeping in their homes, not spreading or being exposed to COVID because of what's involved in having to move. And perhaps even in the worst case, helping keeping people from falling into homelessness. So I just, I'm really proud of this program and I hope we can keep it going. My question is, Hans, you said there is a timeliness. Um, do you know what is sort of the time horizon? Do we have a year? Do we have two years? What is our, what is HUD's expectation for the timeliness of these funds?
Yeah, I, um, behind every rental assistance is at least, is at least one story, if not two stories. And when we look at the eligibility notes of the individual applications, um, you will see folks are unemployed due to COVID-19 OS background. Couple, both unemployed due to COVID-19. A couple and two roommates lost all jobs. Roommates are moving out of town. Um, Caddy at the golf course cannot find a job right now and was also um, working in a different job that he also lost. So they're behind every little, every, not every little, every of applications is a story and is a dire need. So it's, um, it's really rewarding to see how we can help. On the other hand, it's also tragic to see how whole lives were turned upside down through COVID-19. Um, the timeliness spending is a calculation, Councilmember Haffer, that I cannot give you an easy answer. It calculates how much money is flowing out, how much money have we spent on administrative cost. Um, it's, the Rental Assistance Program does not suck any dollars out of the, with respect to administrative cost, I want to be very clear. But it flows altogether, also how much of the grants that we give Salvation Army has been spent, how much of the projects has been spent. So I cannot give you there a really good, good, easy number. Uh, I know on six, on ten, twenty, in two weeks, uh, Grant Leonard will present to you an amendment to the housing plan. And that's a great question for him to speak about this. And I will ask him to briefly talk about the timeliness factor with respect to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. But unfortunately, I, it's, it's, it's.
That's okay, yeah, maybe we can hear from Grant in a couple of weeks. And he'll know this is something that we want to hear about. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Tyler, question, comment?
Yeah, so I just like to echo everything that Dan and Alan had mentioned, appreciation for your creativity and coming up with this from the get go and being the first organization in the county to really get something off the ground here. So this is really helping out a lot of people and just a lot of appreciation. So a few things, when Grant comes and I imagine this is not information that you have now, but it might be helpful during Grant's presentation. It'd be helpful to see how many folks are applying and how long it takes from the moment they apply to they actually receive the funding. Um, oh, uh, okay, because I know that this is something that we talked about. I'm just wondering how this is being promoted and advertised and if there's opportunities for us to expand that, to make sure that we're reaching maximum amount of people as possible to take advantage of this. Um, the sooner that we can get folks to apply to sign up for this, the sooner that we can exhaust those dollars and make sure that we're able to utilize all those. And then the last thing I would throw out there is, as I'm sure you all have heard, the county is looking at implementing its own program. And so I wonder how there might be some partnership and way of working with the county to make sure that, I'm not sure, you know, make sure that we're not missing any gaps and that we can be in support of each other. So those are my three points.
Thanks, Dan. And I think the county is using CARES money, CARES Act money from the federal government, which we did not get as a city. So maybe we.
Yeah, and that's, no, that's exactly kind of my point, right? So maybe there could be some partnership in making sure that, hey, if you don't qualify because of the HUD funding that we have, that we can reference you and use your application that you already submitted to us. And I don't know how that might all work logistically, but I just wonder if there's an opportunity there.
Sure. You know what, as you were speaking, I was thinking about how you get the word out and the city's doing the best it can. But it could be nonprofits who specialize in homelessness. It could be places of worship. It could be the Monterey Palinacilla Renters United, groups like that, that can help us get the word out. Because I don't know how much, the city can only do so much. We can't be knocking on doors and passing out leaflets. But there are groups that maybe can do that sort of thing. Again, partnerships.
I think one thing that Hans and I talked about was maybe paying for an ad in the Weekly or might even help paying for some social media boosting if that. I don't know what the budget is like to be able to help get the word out there. But I think that there might be some opportunities that we might not currently be capturing.
Sure. Yeah, I hear that. Okay, with asserting public comment, Nat, as we were speaking.
We do have public comment this evening and our one caller so far is Esther Malkin. Esther, thanks for joining. And she'll just need to dial star six to unmute. There we go.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to give you an update. I attended and spoke at the county meeting today. And they are live on 211. And that program is CARES money. And so theirs is use it or lose it by the end of the year. Um, they have looser parameters and they are going to be available to whoever doesn't qualify necessarily in our city program. So it might be a good idea to make sure staff can refer people over to the county if they are rejecting applications. Um, they are also going to do their push on social media. It, they officially went live this week, but they haven't done a press release yet, which they're going to. Um, I a hundred percent agree with Tyler about doing a paid ad in the Weekly. Um, I think it's important that people that are not on social media, that actually pick up a piece, a newspaper somewhere, can see that the program is available because it is on Nextdoor, it is on social media all over. And, um, you know, I think the main problem is that the HUD requirements are very, very. And, um, you know, I think the main problem is that the HUD requirements are very, very limiting. And that's why we're not having as much participation as, um, the county expects their money. And they have one point three million, um, to spend. And then an additional, I think, two hundred and uh, something for utilities separate from that. And they expect, they expect to be to go through that in one month. So it, um, yeah, it's it's a, it's a, it's a big program, but they have a, it's a much broader comprehensive coverage, which makes all the difference. Um, but yes, the CARES, the CARES money is use it or lose it. And, you know, whatever money we have left over in our program, I highly, highly recommend and hope that it it maintains and and rolls over into a permanent renter assistance program. Um, because the the problems that we're going to be feeling from COVID are going to be long lasting. And just because people might not be applying for it now or might not qualify for it now, that doesn't mean that they won't in a couple of months from now, especially when the moratoriums are lifted. So, um, I'm happy to, you know, um, send you guys. I took screenshots of all the, um, slides at the county meeting. So I'll forward those over to you today in an email when, you know, as soon as I hang up on this call. And, um, you know, I, it's a, it's a really good thing and it's helping a lot of people, even though you guys might feel like it's slow to take off. And the city of Monterey has really been the leader on this. And, you know, it was really, um, a program that has set the bar. And others, other cities, other cities are modeling it, including County.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your feedback. And appreciate you calling in. We have no other public comment for today. Okay, thanks, Esther, for that information. It was interesting when she shared that it is on social media and so on. And so it's always hard to figure out the best way to reach people. So we'll, we'll continue to look at that and I'm look forward to the screenshots as well. All right, there's no action that we need to take there. We can go to council comments before we do that. Uh, we did have a close session item, one item, but I think with the absence of Councilmember Smith, we should just, uh, continue that over to another meeting. I think it's important that all five of us be there. Any problem with that? Sound good? Okay, council comments. Tyler, you want to start us off tonight?
I'll bless you all with nothing.
Thank you, my brother.
I I will say, I I will say one thing that I said to you all, um, before we went live at the last council meeting, just kind of publicly here, that I just really appreciate working with all five of you. I know Ed's not here right now, but, um, I know that we we all have different ways of looking at it. That's kind of the benefit of of having a council and and folks coming from a different perspective. So anyways, I appreciate all of you. Thank you. And this
Likewise, thanks so much. Councilmember Dan?
Thank you. Uh, I just have one comment that I wanted to mention about, um, uh, the city manager sending us a Monterey City Council annual calendar. Thank you very much for sending that on Friday. I have a couple of suggestions on that. It's a Google Doc, so I'm not quite sure if we can, if we can add that to it or I I'm not sure why it's on that format. And the second thing is, um, if you could add council meetings to it, I think that would help out. But I I appreciate having something that I can look at and, um, and know what's coming up in the next month or two. So thank you very much for doing that, staff. That's all I have.
Great. Councilmember Alan?
I'm good. Thank you all. Just again, share my appreciation as well for the city council and the city staff and the city manager. Thank you all.
Yes, and I I would add my appreciation as well. It's, uh, what an honor to serve our great city with you all. So city manager, any final city manager reports?
So since this is a love fest, we we also appreciate this council and thank you all for your hard work. Seriously, uh, we we had a lot of council meetings in the in the past, uh, five weeks. And and I know you all have other jobs as well, most of you. And and, uh, we appreciate that. And, uh, being a an elected official is is already absolutely time time consuming and time demanding. So, um, um, with that, I have nothing else to say. And then thank you all also for all the good work you are doing. Thank you.
It's all teamwork, my friends. So I think we're adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Please save.
All right.